Good morning, everyone. Seeing that board members are now present, Brooks, will you please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Good morning. President Darlene Hammond.
Here.
Member Escobedo.
Here.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Here.
Member Lewis.
Here.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Olken.
Here.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Here.
Member Patilla Brownson.
Here.
Member Porter.
Here.
Member Rodriguez.
Here.
Member Yoshimori Towari.
Here.
Everyone's present.
All right. In closed session, the board discussed and took action on the following legal matters, MSCV State. And now I want to ask for the public comment slide to be put on the screen so that we can take up our waiver consent items. There we go. The waiver consent items are waivers W. 1 through 6, and we will now open the phone line for public comment queue. Let's take a moment. People who want to make comments should call into the number listed on the slide and use the participant access code. Remember to turn down the volume of your computer or live webcast to avoid background echoes. And public comments are one minute. Is there any public comment?
There are currently no callers in the queue for public comment, so that concludes public comment for W. 1 through W. 6.
Okay. With that, without public comment, is there a motion to pass these waiver items?
Yes.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We'll now hold a roll call vote. Brooks, please call the roll.
President Darlene Hammond.
Yes, aye.
Member Escobedo.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Patilla Brownson.
Yes.
Member Porter.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Yoshimori Towari.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We're now going to move to item 12. Item 12 is the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress System and the English Language Proficiency Assessments for California. We have the request for approval of the proposed addendum to the high-level test design for the California Spanish Assessment, the proposed California Spanish Assessment Revised Blueprint, the proposed revised California Spanish Assessment General Achievement Level Descriptors, and proposed score reporting structure, the 2021-22 results for the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress System, and the English Language Proficiency Assessments for California, and an update on assessment program activities. This is why we call this the mega-assessment item. And CDE recommends that we approve the proposed addendum to the high-level test design, the proposed revised blueprint for the California Spanish Assessment, and the proposed score reporting structure for the California Spanish Assessment. This item will be presented by Cheryl Cotton and Mal Vang of the CDE. Cheryl, can you please begin?
Good morning. Superintendent Thurman, President Darlene Hammond, Vice President Glover Woods, and board members. I'm Cheryl Cotton, Deputy Superintendent at the Instruction, Measurement, and Administration Branch. To assist with this item today, I have Dr. Mal Vang, Director of Assessment Development and Administration Division, to co-present. The item before you today is an action and information item. Thank you. Today's presentation will cover the following: three action items for approval regarding the California Spanish Assessment; then we'll go over the additional assessment updates for the California Assessment for Student Performance and Progress, or the CASP, and the English Language Proficiency Assessment for California, the LPAC. And finally, we will return to the CDE's recommendation for State Board of Education action. At this time, I will provide an overview of the California Department of Education's recommendations for approval. Next slide, please. Thank you. The California Department of Education recommends that the California State Board of Education approve the following: Proposed Addendum to the High-Level Test Design for the California Spanish Assessment, including the proposed revised Spanish Assessment General Achievement Level Descriptors in Attachment 2; the proposed California Spanish Assessment Revised Blueprint in Attachment 3; and the proposed Spanish Assessment Score Reporting Structure as provided in this item. Now, I will have Mal Vang present the remainder of this item. Thank you.
Good morning, Superintendent Thurman, President Darlene Hammond, Vice President Glover Woods, and board members. As Cheryl mentioned, I'm Mal Vang, Director of the Assessment Development and Administration Division at the Department of Education. And I will discuss the proposed actions regarding our California Spanish Assessment. So, the intent of our, the California Assessment per Education Code, Section 606405C, the superintendent is to develop a primary language assessment that would support in part for the SEAL, the state SEAL of Bili literacy. And then we also have the Education Code, Section 51461, has requirements that support the state SEAL of Bili literacy, which is the law that identifies the requirements that support that education code. And one of the requirements is for students to pass an assessment that, at a minimum, assesses speaking, reading, writing, and another language, in another language in addition to English. So, when the development of the California Spanish Assessment began, funds were limited, and the speaking and writing constructive response items were not developed at that time. So, students were unable to use the results of the California Spanish Assessment to meet the one criterion for attaining the state SEAL of Bili literacy. So, last November, 2021, the California State Board of Education did approve a new contract that included the development of the speaking and the expansion of the writing of this particular test. So, the proposed addendum to the California Spanish Assessment High-Level Test Design is what we'll cover next. This addendum articulates how the test design, presented in the 2016 High-Level Test Design for California Spanish Assessment, has been updated to include the addition of the speaking domain and the expansion of the writing domain. So, the team that worked on this addendum was done with input from the CASP Technical Advisory Group, the Assessment Interestholder Group, and Dr. Kenji Hakuta, who was Professor Emeritus at Stanford, and Dr. Guadalupe Valdez, also a professor at Stanford University. And we will continue to meet and work with the various interest holders as we expand the speaking domain, as we develop the speaking domain and expand the writing domain. So, next, I'll cover the California Spanish Test, a general achievement level descriptors. These provide generic descriptions of student performance level expectations across three levels. One of those are approved. They will be used to, once those are approved, they will be used to disaggregate level or grade span-specific achievement level descriptors and develop the reporting achievement level descriptors that describe levels of performance to educators, students, and parents or guardians. And these revisions include the expansion, again, the California Spanish Assessment domains with the addition of the speaking to their general level, achievement level descriptors, and the removal of the word "mechanics" from the descriptor because the writing domain will be fully assessed once operational. Now, I'll go over the revised California Spanish Assessment Blueprint, which includes updates to the 2017 blueprint that the State Board of Education approved. And it provides the proposed number of items and points for the addition of speaking and the expansion of the writing in grades 3 through 8 and high school. So, the number of items and points are subject to revisions on the basis of statistical analyses of the new writing and speaking constructive response items after first field test and the first operational uses. And these are aligned with the California Common Core State Standards in Espanol as translated and linguistically augmented versions of the, which are translated and linguistically augmented versions of the California Common Core State Standards for English Language Arts and Literacy. And now, I'll go over the proposed California Spanish Assessment Score Reporting Structure. So, the proposed reporting structure is included in the item, and it has an overall scale score with three achievement levels: reading, in the domains of reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And then, after the first operational administration in 2024-25, data will be used to evaluate the reliability of the score reporting structure. And additional analyses will be conducted to determine whether we have enough items to support a four achievement level, oh, four achievement levels. In our next steps, once the State Board of Education approves these proposed recommendations, that each action will play a very critical part of us moving forward in the development of the speaking and the writing constructive response items to the operational administration of the California Spanish Assessment targeted to be in the 2024-25 school year. And that brings us to some additional, again, this is the assessment mega-item, so we have multiple topics to bring to you. And now, I will cover the additional program updates that, or highlight the additional program updates that might be of interest to you. We will share the science resources that are in the Tools for Teachers, and then I'll walk through the student score reports redesign, goals and timelines that we have in the works. And then we'll go over the public release of the 21-22 CASP and LPAC test results that just occurred a couple weeks ago. And the science resources that are being built in the Tools for Teachers, just want to share that in July, we, the California Department of Education, continue to conduct our workshops to help California educators develop additional science resources for kindergarten through high school for the Tools for Teachers website. And this is built mainly with workshop participants who are educators, and they're involved as team leads and developers, and then our California Science Staff or Assessment Staff are served as trainers and coaches. And these additional resources are peer-reviewed and posted, built by California educators for California educators, for a total of 70 science formative assessment resources that are available to all public school educators in the Tools for Teachers. Another highlight is the 20, the redesign of the 23-24 California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress, or CASP, and our English Language Proficiency Assessments for California, or LPAC, the student score reports. Here are our redesign goals of this process, is to improve the reporting of the test results provided to students and parents or guardians that include actionable item, information, excuse me, and then also to provide students, parents, or guardians with timely access to their test results while minimizing the distribution effort for local educational agencies. The high-level timeline is provided in that, just high-level wise, from September through January of this school year. ETS, our assessment contractor, would develop, is in the process of developing concept design options, and will conduct formal focus groups and other more informal focus groups as well. As of right now, I'm at the California Educational Research Association Conference, and we will be doing a couple focus groups from our conference participants about the same topic. And then, in February through June, ETS will prepare mockups for CDE to get approval from various interest holders, and this is a time where our SBE members could provide some input and have time to weigh in before the final mockups are done. And then, from July to August, ETS and the CDE will collaborate and use our feedback from the various interest holders and the design options that are provided and prepare sample student score reports planned for our September board meeting. And then, in September, we plan to bring to the State Board of Education the recommendation for the student score report revisions for approval at that time. Now, I will go over the public release of our CASP and LPAC results. Okay. So, the 21-22 CASP and LPAC results were released to the public on Monday, October 24 of this year. And these are the academic and English Language Proficiency Assessments that we use as a state to meet state and federal requirements. One thing I'd like to highlight here, before I go into all the assessments results, I'd just like to provide a little bit of context and background here that we do have one more assessment, the California Alternate Assessment for Science, that you approved the threshold scores in September. Those results will be released in December because we have more time, need more time to work on those reporting of those results. So, the, just some background information to remind us that the 2022 administration really marked the return to full statewide administration for the CASP since 2019. And remember that in 2019-20, many schools quickly turned to remote learning after the discovery of the COVID-19 virus in California. And then, of course, that year, the U.S. Department of Education waived all testing requirements, so there is no CASP or CASP results that year. And then, in 2020-21, to further prevent, right, the spread of the virus even before the development and widespread distribution and use of vaccines, most students continued learning remotely from home for most of the year. So, during that year, local educational agencies who, that were unable to administer our statewide assessments because it was not a viable option due to the factors that are related to the COVID-19 pandemic, were allowed the option to use locally selected assessments that met criteria, certain criteria that the board approved to assess students' learning in English Language Arts and Mathematics. So, when comparing results, the 2021-22 results to results prior to the pandemic, we must consider the continued impact of the pandemic on students, families, and educators in the 21-22 school year. And the context just surrounding the teaching and learning in the 21 and 22 years was quite different and unique than in many LEAs when we look at the context surrounding teaching and learning in the 2018-19 or prior, before the pandemic. So, the data from the 21-22 spring administrations should be considered baseline data for measuring student progress going forward due to those challenges that are presented by the pandemic. And the assessment results, again, just reminding people that are the really one measure of student achievement or proficiency in the case of LPAC, it should always be used in conjunction with other data and measures in making instructional or program decisions. With that, I will go over our, SPECT, there stands for the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. We use the English Language Arts, or ELA, and math assessments from the consortium. And here, I will highlight our statewide results in all tested grades, 3 through 8 and 11. We see that in all students, we showed that 47% of students met or exceeded standards in English Language Arts or ELA there. And then, we also showed the 2019, the last year prior to the pandemic, which is a four percentage point decrease from 2019. So, from 51 to 47. And in mathematics, the decrease appears slightly larger with 33% of students meeting or exceeding standards in 2022, which is a seven percentage point decrease from 2019. And then, we have the same comparisons in grades 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and high school grade 11. And then, we also look at the percent of students meeting or exceeding, who met or exceeded standards by race or ethnicity. And when results are broken down by race or ethnicity, all student groups show decreases from 2019 and the percent of students who met or exceeded standards as well. And the groups that we look at are the American Indian or Alaska Native, Asian, Black or African American, Filipino, Hispanic or Latino, Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander, white, and two or more races. So, each of these have, again, comparing the 2019 through the 22 results for English Language Arts and Mathematics. And then, we also look at the percent of students who met or exceeded standards by gender and program, purely just to fit all this on a slide for you. The groups are, again, we see similar declines because if the overall, there were declines, then, of course, any of the groups would show some decline as well. And the results here for the other groups, student groups, also show decreases from the 2019 in the percent of students who met or exceeded standards, with the exception of ELA for students with disabilities. When we have, you know, the 16 to 16 there in terms of the percent in English Language Arts across the board. So, the groups that we, as I mentioned, also disaggregated the data for here at a high level are, you know, female by female, male, economically disadvantaged, English learner, students with disabilities, students who have at least a family member in the military, and then students whose families are homeless, and then students who are foster youth. However, although all these declines or decreases across almost all groups in English Language Arts and Math, there are some early signs of learning recovery. I'd just like to share that we did have our, ETS, our assessment contractor, conducted a two-year matched cohort analysis to explore how much learning increased for the same group of students at two points in time between 2021, 2020-21, and 2021-22. And remember that in the spring of 2021, about, only about 25% of students in grades 3 through 8 and 11, or about 740,000, 40,000, yes, 740,000 students, participated in the Smarter Balance Summit of Assessments for English Language Arts and Mathematics. And in that analysis, or that analysis, the analysis of that cohort, looking, again, looking at the same students who took the test in 2021 and comparing their results to 22, show a steeper-than-normal achievement gains at most grade levels, which is really a hopeful sign that the state's investments in accelerating learning may be paying off. There, we are providing a sample match cohort chart for mathematics in grades 6 to 7 to highlight the mean scale scores for the 2021, 2020-21 Grade 6 Match Cohort and their results in grade 7 in 2021-22. And the starting point here is kind of small, but hopefully you can see that the starting point was 2495, and the predicted scale score was 2512. And the observed was 2521, which was nine scale score points greater than predicted. So, this rate of change for this cohort was 50%, 52% greater in mathematics than would have been expected for a similar pre-pandemic group of students, that is, students who were in the 2017-2018 with similar grade 6 mean scale scores and their grade 7 mean scale scores for the 2018-19 year. So, additional match cohort analyses for all the available grades can be found in the interpretation guide that we have attached to this item. And it's called the Interpretation Guide to the 2021-22 statewide assessment results. So, the increases here in a match cohort of student scores in English Language Arts and Mathematics between these two years suggest that learning recovery may already be underway, is going in the right direction. And while there's still so much more to be done, of course, in helping students excel and thrive in the coming years, this is certainly a positive sign. Then, I will cover the rest of the other assessments that are under CASP. It's fairly, a fairly big, large program. So, here we have the California Alternate Assessments, or CAAs, for English Language Arts and Mathematics. There are three achievement levels for this particular assessment, and it is for the students with the most significant cognitive disabilities whose individualized education program team has designated that they use an alternate assessment on the statewide summit of assessments. So, the performance on the California Alternate Assessments for English Language Arts and Mathematics are shown with slight decreases from 2019 also. And the statewide results for all tested grades show that 14% of students met standards in ELA, a 2% decrease from the 2019 year. And then, in the California Alternate Assessments for Mathematics, we see a similar decrease from pre-pandemic numbers with a percentage, 8% of students scoring at level 3, which is the highest level of understanding. And then, a 2%, which is a 2% decrease from 2019 also. And then, we also showed the, provide the other summaries for grades 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and grade 11 for high school. And then, next, I will cover the the California Science Test, or CAST. Students in grades 5, 8, and once in high school, take the CASP in those particular grades. So, students were, scores or performance were generally consistent with the pre-pandemic So students were, scores or performance were generally consistent with the pre-pandemic levels with a small increase for some groups in some grades and small decreases in others. However, we're just providing the high level grade level here for you. And the statewide results in all tested grades here show twenty nine percent of students met or exceeded standards in two thousand twenty two with about one percentage point change from twenty nine. And then again, the grades are provided there also. For the California Spanish Assessment, the performance on this particular test, which is an optional assessment, is generally consistent with the pre-pandemic. Two thousand nineteen was the first year of this assessment. And it was the first operational administration. So when comparing the average score reporting ranges by this, by grade, we saw slight decreases in grades three, four, five, seven, and eleven, and the remaining grades stayed the same. And then moving on to the summative LPAC, this is our language proficiency test, the percent of students meeting overall performance level four by grade. And level four is the cutoff for students who can use it as one, to meet one of the criteria for reclassification. So we showed that when compared to, so overall, when compared to the, we did provide all three years, two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty one, not all three, but not the twenty twenty. But for LPAC, there was, although there was the suspension in twenty twenty, and then there's the flexibility in twenty twenty one for CAST. There was no flexibility for LPAC. So pretty much those, we did test about eighty nine percent of students in twenty twenty one as well. So we're providing all three years of results for your reference here. And when compared to the school year ending in the two thousand twenty two there, the percentage of students meeting the overall performance level four was approximately sixteen percent compared to fourteen in twenty twenty one, and then sixteen in twenty twenty, two thousand nineteen. And this is the level again needed for, to be eligible for reclassification. Just to give you an overall, the, the twenty twenty one, twenty two, in that particular year, last year, the number of identified English learners who took the summative LPAC was around one million, a little bit over one million, which is a slight increase of four point six percent from the two thousand twenty one year when we only tested about eighty nine percent of the students. And then overall, most most students or grade groups here, there were slight increases or slight decreases, excuse me, or stay the same from two thousand nineteen, which is again the last pre-pand, pre, the last year before the pandemic compared to our two thousand twenty two year with the exception of grades six through eight, which is slight, there was slight increases there in meeting overall performance level four. And these are, in this particular slide, we have the summative, the two thousand twenty one, twenty two summative LPAC, which is the percent of students at each performance level by grade for your reference. Remember that last year, we, we conducted the alternate LPAC Operational Field Test. The results were used for, to create the summative alternate LPAC results to meet that requirement. And these are the first reported results for this particular assessment, which again is based on the Operational Field Test that we did last year. And in, in the two thousand twenty one, twenty two year, the number of eligible students or English learners who took the Summit of Alternate LPAC was around sixteen, a little bit over sixteen thousand. And again, this is the students who are English learners who are also the most, who also are students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. So this is about approximately twenty nine percent of the students who, who test and met an overall level three. And the alternate assessments, we have three levels. And this overall level three or consider fluent English proficient are now eligible for reclassification as well. I would just want to make one little note that, you know, the percentages may not all add up to a hundred for each grade level or a grade span due to rounding for the Summit of Alternate LPAC and the initial LPAC results. So wanted to point that out. And then for the initial LPAC, this is the test where students who have a home language other than English were first enrolled in our California schools. And they are, they take the LPAC, the initial LPAC for the first time to identify whether they're initially fluent or they are English learners who would need additional services. In this, in last year, the number of students who took the initial LPAC was about over, a little bit over two hundred thousand. And two hundred thousand, two hundred eight thousand and five hundred eighty five to be exact. And that was about eighty four percent of students who are minister, oh, about eighty four percent of the students who administered this initial LPAC are identified as English learners. And then only about sixteen percent of the students who took this initial LPAC met the state definition of English language proficient by receiving the overall scale score, a, a overall score level, a performance level of three or initial fluent English proficient, as I mentioned, and are not required to receive English program or services. And I'm sure that was a lot, but I wanted to provide you a little bit more information that, that covers all the, the highlights of each of the assessments that we administer this past year that are available at this point in time and for our public release. The location for the public web reports is at this website that I've provided and also available. And it includes the summary reports by school, by district, by county and statewide levels for all students and student groups. The, and then it also allows for comparisons or change over time. We also have these performance trend reports by student group and the research files. Researchers can, or, or anybody out there can take the, all the data that are available on the public reporting site provided in these research files that you could download and create other groups or looks by your particular school or region or area that, by school, by district, by county, by student group. So it's a, it's a very much used public reporting site for our California also researchers as well as the general public. And then the, we do, like I mentioned, we did attach the interpretation guide to the two thousand twenty one, twenty two statewide assessment results for you in this item. And hopefully you will refer to that for more information on our public release. And then to help with going through our public release, because some, a public website, reporting site, sometimes there's just so much information, where do you start? We have these short, quick reference guides to our public reporting website. And it provides you a quick overview of where to begin. If you want to just review overall results, you go here. These are the steps you do. If you want to compare test results, you, these are the steps you take. And then how to view change over time for test results. We also have a little how to, so these are little one pager quick reference guides. And then we also have the, you know, how to view this test results by various student groups and how to change and filter those groups. And again, a little one pager to help and guide you along with that. And with that, that brings us to the end of our presentation and following, again, reminding you to follow us on Twitter at C D E Assessments. And then if you have any questions, or I'll stop right here and turn it back to our, oh, sorry. And then our, I will read the, our California recommendations. I'm not sure if, or President, you want me to kind of stop here for any questions or go through that first.
You can certainly read the recommendation and then what we're going to do is take any clarifying questions and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you. So just as, just to go over the C D E recommendation for approval again, the California Department of Education recommends that the California State Board of Education approve the following. The proposed addendum to the high-level test design for the California Spanish Assessment, including the proposed revised California Spanish Assessment General Achievement Level descriptors in Attachment Two, the proposed California Spanish Assessment Revised Blueprint in Attachment Three, and the proposed California Spanish Assessment Score Reporting Structure. And with that, I will turn it back to you.
Can you put up the public comment slide? There we go. So we're going to open the phone line for the public comment queue. And members of the public that are wishing to provide comment on this item can do so by calling the telephone number using the access code on the slide that is shown now. And then while we're waiting, I want to ask our liaison member, Roscoe Gonzalez, if she has any initial comments before me. Then we'll see if there are any clarifying questions from the board, and then we'll go to the public comment and come back for discussion. Member Roscoe Gonzalez?
Hello, I'm going to go ahead and pull it up. Okay, so it's quite a bit that I have actually on this. So I know from this data, and thank you, Mal Bang, for such an extensive and detailed presentation. The pandemic has been extremely challenging on so many levels and it, and it was anticipated, I think, that there would be a direct correlation to the academic progress. I can tell you that a teacher in the classroom through the pandemic and through the years that we've had in the past before we start, before we encountered this new obstacle, it has always been a steady progress of students' growth in the classroom. And as the pandemic hit, we were trying to survive in the class. So I can say that, that survive distance learning and to have students be engaged. And we were so focused on their social emotional status and how they were feeling. And that was also a hurdle that we encountered. So with that being said, I see the concern that the data shows that students in California have not been progressing at the rate that we would like to see. However, also I heard Superintendent Thurman just announced yesterday morning that the Learning Recovery Block RAP will give students an opportunity to receive services that will enhance classroom learning. On a personal note, I have, I want to share with you that these funds are critical to school districts and have, and they're extremely important to students of low income, students like mine, students will, districts will use funds for learning recovery to have students receive purposeful explicit intervention in reading. As an elementary school teacher, I have seen these funds help close the achievement gap. I think that if we continue to provide students with opportunities for tutoring, expanded after-school and summer opportunities, and teacher-led professional learning in literacy, science, and math, we will continue to see considerable improvements in student performance and standards proficiency. The data provided, I think that some of the great tools that were, that we have access to is the California Assessment Accessibility Resource Graphics. I think these graphics display universal tools and designated supports and accommodations allowed as part of the CASP and LPAC systems. And there's also these great tools that I saw from the Smarter Balance annotated response tool videos and their smarter annotated response tool videos showcase some of the student writing scores, score on the Smarter Balance ELA performance task and how educators can use the tool to support student writing. I think these tools are useful when planning and creating student goals. As teachers, we collaborate and plan with our grade levels during this allocated time, and it's an opportunity to guide this work by looking at student samples, curating and developing lessons that contribute standards proficiency. As a teacher and a parent with children taking the state test, I think that it matters most in knowing where we're going and how we're going to get there. And now is a time to be deliberate, deliberate about the work we do in the class and to collaborate with our peers. When we work together, we create a better learning experience and teachers collaboration positively impacts student achievement and allows us as educators to explore new territory. And all this data just tells me that there's lots of work to be done. And yesterday, a lot of it is not so much at the rate that we're learning, but how we pace ourselves and we are just so deliberate about the lessons that we provide our students to increase student achievement. And there's so much more, but I want to leave for public comment, but I, I wanted to give you a little insight as a teacher in the classroom when we see this data. And we see that it's quick to say that students aren't performing, but I think that considering the situation, I think we're progressing. And there's so much more work to be done. And I think that teachers are ready to embark on this journey to get our students to, to raised, rise to the occasion to, to increase our student scores.
Thank you so much. I want to, as the second liaison, offer a couple of comments about the work that Mal described. First of all, I just want to note my appreciation for the improvements in the Spanish test that really, that we asked for a couple of years ago. It's great to see those coming to fruition. They make it more authentic with speaking and writing as well as listening and reading. It's sort of beyond bubbling in. It's really the use of the language in real communication with open-ended responses, which is something we're seeking to do in our assessments. So it's, it's great to see that coming to fruition. Thank you, Mal and, and team for all of the work that went into that. And I really appreciate the deep dive into the Smarter Balanced results. As Gabriella said, you know, we're all interested in understanding it and then responding to the data. The cohort level data are particularly interesting, the cohort rate of gain that you showed, which gives us some insight into how the investments that we're making may be paying off. Just another note for folks, because we had the opportunity to look at the data all kinds of different ways. The, as I mentioned yesterday, the individual students are not falling backwards. They are still continuing to make progress, albeit at in, in the years from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one at a slower rate. The overall levels of performance on the scale scores are basically back to about where they were in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. So we have been, you know, seeing increases each year. This kind of resets us to that level, but we also see this steeper potential gain. And that's our goal in the coming years. As Member Roscoe Gonzalez said, we, we have a great deal of work to do to accelerate learning, and that is going on. What we know about how to accelerate learning, Superintendent Thurman has a series of webinars on learning acceleration. C C E E has put in place a number of resources for districts around learning acceleration. You know, time matters, additional times that we've funded after-school and summer programming across the state. Personalization matters, meeting students where they are in their zone of proximal development around skills, differentiating in the classroom, but also adding tutoring, high-intensity tutoring and small group work in those additional areas of time, both during the school day and beyond those can dramatically improve performance. We know that enthusiastic engagement and thoughtful minds-on, hands-on curriculum that is focused on things that are relevant and engaging for students makes a big difference. We did put out digital guidance that identified for math and ELA the power standards, if you will, and ways to engage students in critical learning in each of the grades, drawing on our Common Core standards, but really with a both fine tune on how to integrate technology supports around how to use power standards to dive deeply and how to engage students. around how to use power standards to dive deeply and how to engage students critically. And then the last thing that we know really makes a difference is being in an environment, a positive climate in which students are experiencing a sense of safety and trust. And we see in the research on social emotional learning and restorative practices that when those elements are there, student achievement goes up because we use our brains more effectively when we're in those kinds of environments. So we're investing in all of those areas. And I gave a little bit of the national perspective from the NAEP tests yesterday. And we have lost less ground than most states and than the national average. As I noted, we maintained in eighth grade English Language Arts. Another study just came out in the last couple of days. I think it came out last Friday and was reported on on Monday from my colleagues Ron Riordan at Stanford, who has a database of all of the districts in the country and all of their progress and so on. And he made the point about these learning lags across the country and showed the relationship between student poverty and, and gains. And nationally, we see that, you know, districts that serve wealthier, more affluent students lost less ground generally than districts that serve more low-income students. And certainly, we've seen the disparities in access to resources in this, in this state. But we also have different outcomes than most states in that we have large districts that serve large numbers of low-income students, students of color, like Los Angeles and San Diego that I mentioned were high performers on the NAEP and gained. Places like Oakland and Compton and Salinas and others actually show some stability and gains during this period of time. And I think that's because our funds went out, not only in quantity for these purposes, $24 billion, but also with a very strong equity focus, trying to be sure that the resources get to the students in the districts that need them the most. So we have a big job to do. We are all focused on that job. I think we should continue to study what's working, what's not working, and also redouble our efforts. And these data are critically important in that. We can ask at this time, any clarifying questions for Mao about points of fact that she raised? And then we'll get public comment, then we'll come back for further discussion. Are there any clarifying questions? Yes, Member Patilla Bronson?
So the item, the item for action is actually, I think, all focused on the California Spanish Assessment. I also just wanted to confirm that this would be in a moment to discuss the redesign possibilities more broadly that was sort of flagged, but is not for action today. Is that right?
Yes, we can discuss that when we get to the discussion, absolutely. And I'm glad to know that you have some ideas on that score, so we'll look forward to that. Member Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you. And thank you Mao for the incredible presentation this morning. Wanted to find out, like in lieu of the Spanish assessment that's going to be developed, students have been able to use IB scores, AP scores and other language classes, right? So they're, they have, they still have access to the seal of biliteracy. Okay, thank you.
And I guess the, the companion question might be whether they would continue to have access to multiple measures that they could use to meet the expectations of the seal of biliteracy after this redesigned exam is available. That may be something we need to take up in our discussion. Member Patilla Bronson?
Sorry, second question unrelated to the first. The, the data that you described around more bright spots around eighth grade ELA scores or ELA, excuse me, as it pertains to the NAEP data, I just wondered if Mao could comment on sort of how to interpret what looks like a more promising trend for eighth grade ELA along the NAEP dimension versus the CASP? And if that's something that is normally, there's some sort of distance between how those two measures sort of evaluate student progress?
Yeah, there, there are really two different sets of standards. NAEP is our only national assessment that every state participates in. It's a sampling of students. So the approach in the administration is a little bit different. I wasn't really, I didn't have any data handy right now about comparing our results to NAEP right now, but I don't know if our, or President wanted to say anything. I was just concentrating on our statewide assessments this morning.
What we just showed, what Mao just shared with us, did not break it down by grade level. In the guide that Mao described, there is a scale score trends by grade level. And I'm, we could look at that, I'll look at it before we come back for discussion. But I believe that eighth graders also did not lose as much, but much of the loss or learning lag, if you want to use that term, was in the earlier grades. And you see bigger learning lags for, you know, the, the youngest students. So we could compare eighth grade to eighth grade if we look at different data, which is not, it's all folded up together on the data that Mao was just describing. I see several people with clarifying questions. Member Escobedo, then Member Yoshimoto Tauri, then Member Oaken. Tony Alpert. We, we do want to get to public comment before we have deep discussions. So let's just be sure we keep these two clarifying questions. Member Escobedo?
With the clarifying question and NAEP versus R scores, I, I was just wondering, I just found as I compare standards from other states, California standards typically are much more rigorous. So that might be an explanation of why there might be just a difference.
Yeah, that is true. We have both more rigorous standards and higher cut scores for our proficiency levels. Member Yoshimoto, Yoshimoto Tauri?
Thank you. I understand now why we call these mega items. So I'm going to limit my clarifying questions just to the Spanish, the item for, up for, for action today. But I do have three very quick ones. The first one Mao is, do we have an extent of the field test for 2324 yet? Like when it'll take place and who's included? I saw in the literature that there's about 300 students ideally per each grade level.
Are you talking about the NAEP?
No, the Spanish language.
Oh, um, in terms, no, I don't have that handy. Let me get that, the, in terms of the field testing. Yes, I don't have that handy. I will get that from my staff.
That's okay as a follow-up. Thank you. And then the second question is, do we, will there be sample questions written for the Spanish language assessment? Like we have eventually?
We do already have the practice and training tests. So that, that's available publicly. But in terms of the, the expanded, like the speaking and the expanded construct, writing expansion, I'm sure that we will always provide as part of the development process sample items out there for the field to refer to.
Thank you. And then my last, again, brief clarifying question is, in the speaking section, when the student's speaking is recorded, is it using headphones or is it one-on-one? How is that, what's that process being explored?
Well, now, the only assessment we have that assesses speaking is in the ALPAC, right? The English Language Proficiency Test. And in that, I believe it is recorded, well, it's in person. The teacher listens and then scores, but it's also recorded as well. So just for read behind purposes, but we have those capabilities.
So we're thinking about the speaking portion of the CSA to be similar to how we do the ALPAC?
No, at this point, it's not defined yet. I was just referring to a similar test that we have that would have speaking. But those would be, probably be options. But in terms of the specifics for administration, those specific directions will still be in the works. So if I speak prematurely, those are probably various options, but it will be more defined in the future.
Thank you, thank you.
And before I go to Member Oaken, I think Tony Alpert had raised its hand because he wanted to respond to one of the clarifying questions earlier. Is that right, Tony?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Tony Alpert, Executive Director for Smarter Balance. In addition to the, the factual representation that California standards are more rigorous than other states, the Smarter Balance assessment is a ELA literacy test, which includes, as you're aware, listening and research and writing. NAEP is a reading test. So what we need, in part, what we need to do is, is dig in a little bit deeper on some of these other dimensions of ELA, especially writing. So I suspect that whereas reading probably was more sustained during the pandemic, writing probably fell a little bit astray. And that might be why we're seeing differential results between NAEP and Smarter Balance.
Thank you. Member Oaken?
Thank you. Thank you for all the analysis and both here and in the interpretation guide. It's very helpful and I really appreciate it. I mean, my, my clarifying question is just, I noticed in the slides and in my, geez, sorry. And in my quick perusal of the interpretation guide, I don't see a similar analysis. So we have the, the ELA and math percentage of students met or exceeded standards by grade level and then by subgroups. Is there an analysis that is at the, the lowest level? So it's like from 2019 to 2022, the percentage of students who are far below, so that we can see where, how that's changed over time? Because when I, when I'm thinking about the acceleration, learning acceleration, that's a group that feels really important to be addressing. So I'm just wondering if that analysis has been done and if not, if it can be for us?
I will address that, that all those specific results are available in the public reporting side. So by each of the achievement levels is already there. We were just taking some of the high-level or key points of the results to share with you. But if you go to the link that I provided in the interpretation guide, it's also there as well. When you are on the public reporting side, you could get all the details, like how many students are tested at each level, how many students are at each performance level across the grades, across the various groupings.
Okay, and it's rolled up in a similar way to make it easy to, to see just like this?
That's right.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
It looks like Tony, do you have your hand up again? Or is that from before?
I do, thank you. And I really appreciate California's transparency around public reporting. I think it's also really important to look at the students at the lowest level of performance by group, demographics and program participation, because the strategies that districts will need to use will be different regarding their needs to accelerate those all students' learning.
Absolutely. The other thing I would just say is we're, you know, dealing, digging into the needs in the, in the field is that, you know, you get a broad sense from scores like the end-of-the-year test in Smarter Balance. But there are also interim assessment tools that are part of Smarter Balanced and other diagnostic tools that districts are using. Those are really what get activated at the beginning of the school year when you're trying to figure out exactly what a student needs and knows and needs in the next, you know, coming months. With seeing no other clarifying questions, I think we should move to public comment. And let's see if we have any public comment.
Yes, there are currently six callers in the queue. I will open up the phone line now. Good morning, State Board of Education. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending in the last four digits, 8256. You are now live. Please start your public comment. Okay, moving on. Caller with the last four digits, 5116. Please start your public comment now.
Good morning, Jessica Sacco on behalf of Children Now. I want to thank the department for sharing their plans for the upcoming year in regards to how they plan to revise the student score reports to better communicate with families. We really think it's critically important to help families understand how well their student is doing. And inclusion of information such as recent progress can be a critical step in helping families support the student meet the state standards and graduate, or eventually graduate college and career-ready. One of the important pieces of information that was left out of the student score reports are the claim scores that are no longer available due to the abbreviated blueprint. Those claim scores include information in Language Arts, such as separate scores for reading, writing, listening, and research and inquiry. That detailed information at the student level is really helpful for students and families so that they can target the support that their child needs. Currently, they are only available at, at the group level, which is not very useful for families. We would also encourage the use of comparison data points, visuals on year, year progress, as well as additional information to help families understand Lexile and Quantile scores and how they may access resources to support students consistent with their level. And we look forward to helping the department engage with parents and families and communities in order to inform the development of the next iteration of student score reports.
Thank you, Kelly. Your time is up. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning, Liz Guillen with Public Advocates for the LCFF Coalition. Yes, appreciate the data that's presented on, on test scores and also appreciate the positive, the positive words about the results. For the community and in these various student groups that are lagging, that were lagging even before the pandemic, these results are catastrophic. And it's not even clear whether or not our students will have the time to catch up. So me, it highlights what we have been asking for, both at the legislature and through the department, for greater transparency in the use of these funds. The first report on the use of the Learning Recovery Block Grant is December 2024. And we urge and beg the department to require more transparency about who's being consulted on the use of these funds.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up.
In addition to.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, this is Doug McRae, a retired testing specialist from Monterey. I'm going to do quickly two things, item six and item 12, since I was not successful with six. For item six on the consent yesterday, I submitted to your electronic folder a concern over overpayments to ETS in the 2020 and 2021 testing cycles, receiving a fully budgeted amount rather than a cost reimbursement amount. I estimated the overpayments to be $123 million. There would be several ways for ETS to return those dollars to California. For item number 12, I submitted to your electronic folder a preview, preliminary version of a four-page Smarter Balance concession, concession-wide GAIN score data document with the results from 10 of 11 states. Bottom line is that the gains from 2021 to 2022 were very positive, justifying claims by state leaders, they were headed in the right direction. Be happy to provide additional information for both item six and 12. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, this is Manuel Bnderostro, Associate Director of Policy at California Together. We first want to thank the board and CDU for reviewing 12 separate results to report it. We first want to thank the board and CDE for reviewing 12th annual results to report it to citizen families and appreciate the plan to make these things understanding more accessible. For the report for the English Language Proficiency Assessment, we recommend that these clearly display whether a student is making adequate progress over time towards English proficiency and whether a student is at risk, what has become a long-term English learner. Further, the current report on the alternative ALPAC assessment lacks the clarity provided in the standard ALPAC report, and we recommend making these easier to understand. Lastly, we are grateful for the board and CDE as we continue to implement the California Spanish Assessment and thank them for continuing to engage our coalition on these important discussions. The CTA is a key aspect of California's efforts to expand students' languages and local language listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time starts now.
Hi, Peter Ahan, California Association of Science Educators, speaking on behalf of a coalition of science educators and organizations who submitted a letter to explain our thoughts in detail. We have been working together to advance equity in science education throughout California and shared our blueprint in the letter. We are grateful to CDE for their work in building the science tools for teachers and working with teachers in building this resource. We look forward to helping CDE to expand and promote. We also would like to thank CDE for its hard work in getting science data linked to this year's dashboard. The scores indicate that districts have still not invested in science and in GSS implementation. They are not likely to do so until science is included on the main dashboard. We are grateful for the support that the State Board of Education has given to including science as a dashboard indicator once two consecutive years of data are available and look forward to science being on the next year. Having a strong science education for all students is vital to provide equal access to STEM career pathways. It is also critical that California has a science literate workforce and citizenry.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time starts now.
Hi, good morning. My name is Dr. Joselva Moreno. I'm the Director of Parent Relations for California Association of Global Education, School Administrator, University Professor. Sharing with you that in Alameda County, only one school district out of 18 has to include a goal for English learners in the LCAP. Keep in mind that the county enrolls 43,020 English learners and only one district or 5% of the districts needs to address the growth of English language proficiency for the students. The accountability system only identifies two districts or 10% out of 18 that are eligible for additional support to differentiate and assist us. The issue of transparency addressed in principle speaks to the need to shine a light on language and academic needs of English learners. I think we would all agree that in the number of English learners in Alameda County, we need to evaluate the transparency of the accountability system. But the end of the year, for quite.
Caller, I apologize, I think you want to be calling back for the following item. This is requiring our statewide assessment results. I think you want to call in for the next item.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes public comment for item number 12.
All right, thank you very much. We're now open for board discussion on this item. And I know that member Yoshimoto Tari, you had an additional area of inquiry that you were holding for discussion. Vice President Glover Woods, you ready to jump in?
Yes, I sure can. First, again, thank you so much, Mal, for always giving such a wonderful presentation and outlining all of the things regarding assessment and quite excited to see the development for the California Spanish Assessment. I just wanted to underscore a couple of pieces and also make a request. As was stated, the data that we were looking at with the SPAT should be for 2022 considered baseline. And I agree, I think it's important to look back at what has occurred and how the pandemic has impacted instruction. I also believe that we are now in 2022, in the 2022, 23 school year, and we need to look at the data where it is and make some actionable steps forward to make some adjustments. In saying so, I am concerned about the scores that we are looking at and that have been shown for our African-American student group as well as our English learner student group. So I encourage both at the state level and also at the local LEA level that we do some further disaggregation of those student groups to see other information that might be illuminated in the data once we look at that, those student groups in a bit more of a fine tune, if you will. Also, just want to highlight President Darling Hammond really outlined some very key accelerating learning strategies and actions that we need to keep in mind as we look at the utilization of the funds that have been put forward. And just really, again, looking forward from where we are now to what needs to happen. Because the data really shows that those gaps that were present before the pandemic for multiple student groups still do exist. And I just strongly encourage all of us, those in the field, as well as those of us on the board, to look at what are those strategies we need to use to close those gaps and bring our other student groups forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Patilla Bronson, member Rodriguez.
Good morning and thank you, Mal, again for the presentation, which was very, very helpful and as always, brings to light lots of important trend lines. So I guess the first set of comments really is just around what our vice chair was just describing of wanting to keep an eye on both where the pandemic exacerbated versus created new gaps that didn't exist before. And this is not something that I necessarily expect today's presentation to solve, but I do think, I'm trying to think about what is the role of the state board in both being able to disaggregate not just data, but which intervention strategies are most impactful in actually reaching different student groups and different disparities numbers. So I am delighted and relieved to see some acceleration of learning patterns and catch-up and also expecting that there'll be some differential progress as between if it's tutoring or after-school or summer that shows progress for different student groups. And I'm not sure if the CAFSP data can get us there, but I'm putting it on sort of our list of things to think about for the future for making sure that we're lifting all boats, but also recognizing that different boats have different levels of buoyancy coming into it. So the second thing that I wanted to raise up was the issue of redesign and the calendar that you shared moving forward. I'm sort of picking up on the prior conversation that we had at the last board or maybe two board meetings ago around whether and how to create space for school averages, district averages, and statewide averages to be included for information that's available to parents on the score reports. I think we had, you had shared in the last meeting that there's sort of a time delay between the time available for individual scores to go home to families versus when the averages would be made available. So wanted to first ask if there's any update about being able to align those to be able to actually provide those averages to parents. And if, if there is a technical challenge that makes the creation of those district-wide and state and school-wide averages challenging, if we can include prior-year averages?
I could say a little bit about that if.
Please do, yes.
With, we, it is always our intent to include them. It's just that at this point, the data is not available due to the suspension and prior years, right? 2020, 21. So we didn't have enough data to report, and that is why we were excluding them from the current year one. But through the process of redesign this year, we can certainly, you know, continue to look at that. And as we progress and more years of data are available, we can put as much information as reasonable on the student score reports, including this. Or, you know, with a lot of technology advancement now, we could probably find better ways of getting data to students and parents in even more timely, in a more timely manner and provide more data and information as well. So we look forward to your feedback and we have this as on our bucket list of continuing to do and pursue. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you. Member Rodriguez and then member Yoshimoto Tari.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to thank our liaisons, member Oroscall and President Darling Hammond on your, the way you framed, first of all, shout out to teacher-led practices. Thank you so much for that, because that's important, right? For us to have, we know our students and for us to help each other, help our students grow is so important. And, and also President Darling Hammond, you mentioned a lot of the funds that, you know, are going into, that we've committed to support our students and the social emotional learning. One of my concerns is also the concern that Vice President Glover Woods raised, you know, are the students who just, they seem to be continuing to fall behind. And my experience as a teacher for 25 years has, it seems like there's a socio-cultural component, you know, where I feel like the, like, like students have been disengaged. You were mentioning engagement, right? They've been disengaged from the process. And, you know, we really wanted to challenge them. We want to have them be in robust classes and give them the props so that they can be successful. But the first part is the engagement, right? How do we, how do we make them active participants in the learning process and constructing their learning? And, and so that's a question that has come up for me many times and especially looking at this data. You know, I want to see our students continue to grow. And, and so there's, the commitment that we have made as a state, it makes me hopeful, because, you know, we have to, and then we have to ensure that it's being, that the students who really need those supports, whether it's pull-out interventions, the tutoring, right? If it's done well, and, and students have a chance to have feedback with a person who's supporting them. Pulling students out, identifying students that need that extra support is essential. And I also want to comment on the seal of bili literacy and just what an impact that's had, speaking of engagement, on a lot of the students in my community, because their language is being valued, right? You know, they feel like, yes, we, we are bilingual and students who maybe aren't bilingual yet, we're working towards that. And so that is, that is a wonderful tool that, for encouragement and engagement that we provide as a state. And lastly, I want to comment also on, you know, the science and the importance of science. On Halloween, I started my class for the first few minutes going over the history of vampires. And, you know, and just how there were vampires in Mesopotamia and Greece, in Mexico. And oftentimes, you know, right, like in ancient civilizations, they were used to explain phenomena, natural phenomena. And, but then, you know, when the vampire became big in, I believe it was Romania, Bulgaria, they, it was to explain a pandemic, people were dying. And, but they didn't know about the science of death, right? You know, and so, yeah, and I was telling my students and I, we were talking about the importance of science, because as we learn more, we don't rely on supernatural theories to explain natural phenomena. And, and they were really excited, they were like, science! And so anyway, yes, science is so important, you know, especially in this era of disinformation. When we go to the science, we can, when we have that scientific training, we're able to explain a lot more. So, thank you.
Thanks so much. Member Yoshimoto Tari.
Thank you, Board President. I have some general comments on the information items and then a comment or just for discussion on the action item. So first, our Board President and Vice President did an excellent job in setting the stage around the context for the assessment. So I don't want to reiterate any of that, but I did want to add that I, I think that we learned a lot in the, during the pandemic or now the endemic about how to use multi-tiered systems of support to really be pronounced and explicit about those, not only in academics, but in very human needs, like mental and physical well-being, food sustenance, housing support, as well as remembering well-being joy and connectedness and the importance of that. And never before in my 30 years that I see not only educators, but maintenance and operation workers, librarians, principals, city staff, municipalities, frontline health care workers supporting one another and being surrounded by private philanthropy and community-based organizations. So I hope that we take that with us in our recovery phase and use that to our benefit in the acceleration phase that our educators want and need that support, like we talked about yesterday in the community school effort. And wanted to bring the community school effort into the context today as we, as we think about our recovery and our acceleration. In terms of science, I believe science is the place where reading comprehension gets applied, mathematics gets applied, and true critical thinking and inquiry processes get applied. So I just want to commend the department for working on the tools for teachers and those 70 mini lessons. I think those are really important and I just wish that we can continue that work into next year. And then in terms of the last information item I wanted to address, the, again, gratitude to the CDE staff for working with the SBA Consortium, et cetera. And I just want to reiterate the importance of having the claim scores, even though we're using the modified, more concise, Smarter Balance assessment. And to reiterate, Board Member Portillo Bronson's comments about the comparative data for parents and families. I think that our students will benefit from our families, our educators, our counselors understanding what specific areas of support and instruction are needed. And the work on the focus IABs have been incredible, but I would ask in next year's work plan that we include the shorter possibilities for a shorter ICA as well, that matches the shorter summative. Because many schools want to use the ICA as a formative assessment and then have multiple forms of that ICA, so they can do like a beginning and possibly a middle before the summative to give our educators an opportunity to see growth over time. And then finally, for our Spanish language assessment, Mal, I was just hoping in a moment you could explain to us the process the department used to determine the descriptors. The, and then also, given that we're so early in the process of the CSA development, the Spanish language assessment development, there's an opportunity to revisit and revise the descriptors, even if we approve those today. And I'm asking primarily because I noticed that the, one of the terms used is limited to a limited degree. And the, the first time, it just reminds me of the term limited English proficiency that we've tried so hard to move away from. And when limited English proficiency was first used, it was first used in 1975, associated with Lau versus Nichols. And we've moved, we've moved, you know, we've grown a lot in the last 40 years in regard to our belief around assets-based language. Our, our students learning English, and in this case, our students learning Spanish, bring other languages and other assets to the table. And so I just wondered about the process used to formulate the descriptors and if there's any room to possibly revisit those, again, even if approved to. and if there's any room to possibly revisit those, again, even if approved today for the immediate work plan. Thank you.
So lots of issues there. Tony raised his hand because I think he wants to answer one of your questions. And then Mal, if we can come to you for that last question. Tony?
Thank you. For the record, Tony Elbert, Executive Director, Smarter Balance. The reason why we can support a more concise blueprint on the summative test is because it's adaptive. If we look, and, and similarly, the blocks that we have in the interim assessment are focused on a smaller body of content. And so to include the ICA, which mimics the blueprint of the summative assessment and in a shortened manner, it would be a short fixed form, which would work for about this portion of the student population. And so for most students, it would not be reliable. And certainly, the claim information would be insufficient under any conditions to report on that, that broad swath of content. So what, what we recommend is that if, if folks want to use the items from the ICA, they can use the interim assessment item portal to create their own version of an assessment and using the items from Smarter Balance. And that's available in Tools for Teachers. So they could link together multiple IABs and use that information as part of their formative assessment process.
Thank you. We're gonna come back in, I think, January to talk also about the demonstration of concept that the Smarter Balance team has done with bringing performance tasks into the school year. And some states are sort of piloting that with the idea of using that also to develop claim scores that could be available for all students. So there's a lot of, a lot of things to talk about there. Mary Ann, did you want to answer one of the questions? Is that why you're popping up, Mary Ann Arcilla, our ETS representative?
Yes, for the record, hello everyone. Good morning, board members. My name is Mary Ann Arcilla, Executive Director at ETS. We are the, we serve as a state testing contractor. I wanted to respond about the process for the descriptors. And so it, the CSA has been around for a few years now. And at the very beginning, there was a multi-step process to develop the descriptors. And for each process, for each stage, we, we had teachers, we had educators come together to identify, to go through the standards, identify what a, a student at each level should be able to do or you would know, what, what they would know how to do. And then they helped draft the descriptors. And so we did that with educators at each stage and, and at each point, we, we provided them to the CDE, CDE provided the recommendations. There were, you know, revisions when they were received by the CDE and the CDE provided the recommended descriptors to the state board for approval. With the addition of speaking and writing for, or for CSA, for this expansion, we did something very similar. And then, and so that's, the recommendations, the revised descriptors are what you're seeing now. We ran them through a number of reviews externally. And then with the CDE and the CDE made the final recommendations that you're seeing today. Hope that answers your, your question.
I think that answers one part of the question. The other part was whether we can rethink the use of the term limited.
Oh, Board President, I could probably address that a little bit. And in addition to what Mary Ann said, we did vet these by our experts, as I mentioned when we worked on, and educators, as Mary Ann mentioned, when they were first developed. So we can change the word at this time to something different, like we did for ALPA. Like, for example, we had beginning at that time and then we changed it to beginning instead of limited. So we are aware that that would probably be a phrase we wouldn't want to use going forward. So thank you for bringing that up and we are taking note of that. And it, at this, during this process, we can certainly do that.
Thanks so much. I have a question on the Spanish assessment too. Member Olken, are you on that same point or a different point? Okay, you go first.
Thank you. So I, I was hoping to return to the question that got briefly raised during our clarifying questions about the seal of biliteracy. Once the, the, get my, CSA is, becomes a valid means to, to assess seal of biliteracy, there's a question whether the, the ways that students currently are able to demonstrate their biliteracy will still be available so that we have multiple measures. And I just wondered if that's something we, we thought, if that's something that's being considered so that we could, and if not, maybe we, could we?
Mal, do you know the answer to that question? I mean, that's really a policy use question and...
Yeah. I don't have an answer. I'm sorry, couldn't catch all of it because someone told me I was echoing. So I was trying to fix my techn, my technology here.
Yeah. And it, it sounds like perhaps maybe that it's more of a, a question to put out there more broadly than to you in particular.
It may be a question for us. I think, you know, I would...
It's a question for us.
I think I hear, I think I hear you affirming the value of having multiple ways of doing that. I believe that that is still going to be the case, but I'd love to be sure that that's the case so that students don't have to take more tests than are needed to be able to demonstrate their competence. If they're taking AP Spanish, you know, and that's one of the ways, you know, in, then we should preserve that option as long as, and, and other options that have been on the table.
That's exactly what I was trying to say. Thank you.
Vice President Glover Woods nodding, so I, I think I'm seeing some sense of a sense. So I think we want to check into the fact, check into what the policy framework is for that and weigh in if there is any question about that. I have just one last question about the blueprint. When I raised the notion about speaking, Mal, you said that that was not on the table, but I, I thought in the original slides, I saw that right around slide eight or nine, that it's, it did say that speaking was one of the domains along with... Could you go back to the, in the slides unless they changed from the earlier slides I had seen previous to the meeting?
Yes, speaking is hard.
Okay.
Yes, I just couldn't get there fast enough. But also, I'm, I'm in this room and there's a lot of other noise. I don't know if you guys are getting some feedback.
We are, we are getting your feedback. It's lovely to hear your voice twice. Which is what we're hearing. So yeah, just to clarify that, you know, the proposed revised CSA general ALDs will add speaking to the general ALDs. They will include domains for speaking as well as writing and reading. And I'm not sure if listening is there, but that is something we talked about earlier as well. Says the overall scale score with three achievement levels and reading, writing, listening and speaking domains was on slide 10, so I'm happy about that. And, and that is the kind of blueprint we want to approve, I think. So at this point, I think we've made all of our comments. I'd take a motion, if there is one, to respond to the CDE recommendations. And there they are again. May I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you. And second, thank you very much. Brooks, can you call the roll call vote?
Apologies, we didn't catch who was the second?
Uh, Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Great, thank you. All right, President Darlene Hammond.
Aye.
Member Escobedo.
Aye.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Aye.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Patillo Bronson.
Yes.
Member Porter.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Yoshimoto Tari.
Yes.
Motion carries now.
Terrific. We are one minute ahead of schedule. So we will now take a 16-minute break and I will see you back at 10:45. Remember to stay in the meeting, but turn off your video and your microphone. All right, welcome back. Let's ask Brooks to call the roll to reestablish the quorum.
Welcome back. President Darlene Hammond.
Here.
Member Escobedo.
Here.
Vice President Glover Woods. I see Vice President Glover Woods, so. Member Lewis.
Here.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Olken.
Here.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Here.
Member Patillo Bronson.
Here.
Member Porter.
Here.
Member Rodriguez.
Oops, here.
Member Yoshimoto Tari.
Here.
Everyone's present.
All right. The next exciting item is item 13. The update on the implementation of the integrated local, state and federal accountability and continuous improvement system. Approval of the California School Dashboard Principles. A review of the Local Control and Accountability Plan requirements for the English Learner Student Group and dashboard outreach activities. And the item for action is the CDE recommends the approval of the California School Dashboard Principles. This item will be presented by Cindy Kazanas and Josh Strong of the CDE, as well as Eric Crane from WestEd and representatives of the Sacramento County Office of Education. I saw Shauna Cook Harvey over there, so hello Shauna, and others from the Sacramento, Sacramento County. Cindy, please begin.
Thank you, President Darlene Hammond. I'm Cindy Kazanas. I'm the Director of the Analysis, Measurement and Accountability Reporting Division. It's great to be with you this morning on a Thursday. We have been extremely busy these last couple of weeks, if not this whole year. And so you're gonna hear some of the culmination of, of the work for, for accountability today for the year. And we'll give you a little bit of a glimpse into the, the public release that we're planning for in December. Before I get started, I just wanted to acknowledge yesterday you had a celebration for two of my favorite attorneys in the entire state, Amy Holloway and Judy Sias. And I, just from a personal perspective, what great examples of career public servants they are and have learned so much from them. And their leadership has been invaluable to our work, not only in accountability, but in compliance and other things that are maybe not so exciting to the public, but are necessary pieces of, of our democracy. And so I just wanted to acknowledge you have two amazing individuals who have been supporting your work for a number of years and it's going to be a lot of big shoes to fill. So shifting over to today's topics, we're gonna talk about our dashboard principles, the California School Dashboard Principles through Attachment 1. You're gonna learn a little bit more with my colleague Josh Strong about our English Learner Student Group and their role in the Local Control and Accountability Plan process. And then we'll close it out with our dashboard outreach activities. We are all over the state. I just came back from Anaheim and am going to San Diego tonight and I'm really excited to share with you how these activities are really, I think, impacting the field in a positive manner. As already stated by President Darlene Hammond, the item recommendation is the California Department of Education, CDE recommends approval of the California School Dashboard Principles. So shifting over to Attachment 1. One thing I've been reflecting on because we keep getting a lot of correspondence, I think that is confused about the purpose of these principles. So I looked back at one of the organizations that are, that we follow as a state agency, which is the Council of Chief, Chief State School Officers. And back in 2019, they put out a, a really good handbook for state agencies to look at in thinking about managing changes that affect accountability outcomes. And one of the statements in that, that document really, I think, really summarizes today's work around the principles. And I'm gonna just quote it verbatim so I don't, don't mess this up. But it talks about many of the changes to the accountability and assessment systems are necessary. And if implemented with fidelity, can effectively support the ultimate goal of any educational system, improving learning for all students. However, implementing these changes can be complicated, multi-layered and multifaceted endeavor involving many actors and stakeholders. A change to one component or aspect of either accountability or assessment systems can lead to a chain reaction that affects other components or other aspects in both systems. Changes generally have implications and consequences, intended or unintended, on interpretation and use of accountability outcomes. States therefore need to thoughtfully plan and carefully manage the changes with respect to implementation, reporting and communication. So before you today is the start of that process. We know there are changes coming to this dashboard. You've heard it in the last item around science. You've heard it in prior board meetings around English learners and the use of the English learner progress indicator and the academic indicator. And so the principles are intended to have the board really document the work that has been done to date, but also to look forward to using these as a basis to support decisions. It doesn't mean that these principles can't change, but in fact, this allows us to at least have a framework and some guardrails for moving forward. We are committed as a department to bringing these principles back to you annually. If there are adjustments that need to be made to allow for additional indicators to come in in a different fashion than what was first envisioned, absolutely, we will bring that to you. So I just want to make sure that I put that lens forward as this is simply the beginning of a conversation we know is going to be a long one over the next couple of years. So when we looked and we heard from you and from others in anticipation of the adoption of these principles at this meeting, we incorporated changes that we, again, heard at the State Board of Education meeting, the CPAG meeting and members of the public. And so in Table 1, I want to make sure that you have that in front of you because we're not going to show you that table. We're gonna show you the, the clean version of the principles. That, Table 1 shows you the September version. It shows you the November version. And then we were able to use track changes to show you what had been changed in response to your feedback. And we heard that there's some grammatical pieces that may need to be changed and so we look forward to your feedback around consistent use of the word dashboard principles as opposed to accountability system. And so to get us started, let me just reiterate the purpose of the dashboard. The California School Dashboard provides parents and educators with meaningful information on school and district progress so they can participate in decisions to improve student learning. And with that, I am pleased to turn this over to my colleague from WestEd, or rather, the R15 Comprehensive Center, Eric Crane.
Thank you, Director Kazanas. President Darlene Hammond, Vice President Glover Woods, Chief Deputy Superintendent Nicely and distinguished board members, good morning. I'm Eric Crane and I'm a senior researcher and technical assistance provider with the Region 15 Comprehensive Center at WestEd. I want to start with a little bit of background about the comp centers. We provide high-quality, intensive capacity building services to states in the Western region. That includes California as well as Nevada, Utah and Arizona. Our focus is in helping state agencies implement evidence-based programs and practices and interventions that support improved outcomes for students and educators. The context for the principles was, was that there includes that there were some changes at the CDE, at the leadership level, new board members. And the importance of identifying, documenting, enshrining and memorializing formally some of the discussions of past boards as relates to the accountability system and specifically focusing on the dashboard. Of past boards as relates to the accountability system, and specifically focusing on the dashboard. And so the department reached out to Region Fifteen. Uh, to facilitate the discussion and to document these principles. The request, um, stems in some, in, you know, in some measure from, um, a, a successful work that was done in a different context. Where when CDE with the SBE was looking at the development of a growth model. The establishment documentation of principles around the growth model was, was helpful to that process. So the request was that the comp center provide content expertise, facilitate conversation about the principles among CDE leadership. And present to groups such as the TDG and CPAG. Take the lead in documenting the discussion and then present to the board. So I wanna start and, uh, let me acknowledge the rich, robust discussion back at the September meeting. Um, you'll find that there, while there are not many changes from September, those that, um, that have been made in the interim. Um, do reflect that discussion and, and they're pretty, um, significant in their, in their scope and framing about some of the issues here. So. Dashboard Principle One is that the dashboard focuses on elements. That express the commitment to a well-rounded, well-supported education and make space for what is valued locally. The change here was just really one of clarification. The past version had the word priorities in there, and, uh, there was consensus that for clarity and to minimize any chance of confusion with, um. LCFF priorities that, um, the, the word commitment gets substituted in for priorities. Dashboard Principle Two, that the dashboard reports opportunity and performance gaps. Among student groups through the Equity Report that is available for each state indicator. So this principle received the most robust discussion at the September, in September meeting and has the most, uh, significant changes. Both in the main text and in the, in the supporting paragraph. Um, the changes here, uh. Elevate the, uh, I, the i- the i- the idea of and the importance of, um, highlighting opportunity and performance gaps. That was something that we heard loud and clear from the board back in September, and so that language of opportunity and performance gaps. Is in the statement proper, uh, as well as the, uh, elaboration within the supporting paragraph. So it's Principle Two that saw the biggest changes since September. Principle Three, that the dashboard reports each indicator separately. Now, a thing to be said about, um, Principle Three is that, uh, this one also saw pretty s- significant, um, edits since September. The, um, framing back in September was. Gives equal weight to each indicator, and those, uh, six words, um, contain, contain a lot and really, um, upon reflection. Um, really needed to be, uh, expanded into two. So the old, uh, Dashboard Principle Three from the September meeting has now become. Uh, Principles Three and Four. And in this treatment with, with Principle Three, we're highlighting that the different indicators are reported separately. The, the, the big idea here in the revised Principle Three is that California, um. In significant contrast to, uh, to most of the states, does not. Apply X percent to this indicator and Y percent to this other indicator to boil it down to a single, uh, index. By highlighting each indicator separately, um, California's made a thoughtful decision that. Discussions about each indicator, um, are important on their own, and that the color-based system that California uses facilitates. Those kinds of conversations about how a school or LEA is doing on, say, graduation rate or, say, mathematics performance. So. Principle Three is about keeping the, uh, reporting separate for each indicator. The new Principle Four is the other part that was in, in the former Principle Three, and that's that the dashboard values each indicator equally. By not putting a percentage weight on each indicator and by showing each indicator standing on its own. Um, the dashboard draws just as much attention, uh, to each and every indicator, and in fact, um. In the early versions of many state systems, uh, test scores predominated in, in their importance in the system. Um, and not so with California's system. Yes, the, the number of indicators, um. Do, uh, lean toward, um, academic, uh, academic performance and academic indicators, and that's in keeping. Uh, with the requirements of ESSA and with California's priorities. Um. But again, there's, there's no, um, name, naming or overweighting of one indicator over another. Taken in the aggregate, there is a substantial focus on academic indicators. Principle Five, the dashboard values high performance and growth equally. No changes here. Principle Six. The dashboard reports transparently and comprehensively at the state, district, school, and student group levels. Again, from September, no changes here. Principle Seven, the dashboard promotes effective visualization, clear communication, and thorough documentation. For here, just, um, the supporting paragraph had just a small technical cleanup. Dashboard Principle Eight, that the dashboard reflects technical quality through measures that are valid and reliable. Principle Nine, that the dashboard leverages the expertise and the perspectives of a broad set of educational partners and community members. Again, no changes since September. Principle Ten, the dashboard promotes coherence between data reporting and support improvement programs. Again, no changes. And finally. Dashboard Principle Eleven, the dashboard is subject to continuous revision and improvement. And I'll just say something about, again, this was no changes since September, but I'll say something about this. And I think Director Kazanas framed it really nicely in the, in the opening, that the process of looking at the dashboards. Yeah, you know, it's, it's the department's intent to bring these annually before the board, and that, that would be my recommendation as well, is that. Um, in pulling together principles, um. Things do change, and, um, the idea of looking, uh, at the principles annually makes a lot of good sense. And so it was, uh, really helpful to hear that framing, and I, I think that's something, uh, to be supported. Really with that, that's, that's the, uh, the gist of the changes in terms of the, uh, the dashboard principles, and I'll pass it back over to Director Kazanas.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, President Darling-Hammond, do, do, did you want to pause for clarifying questions, or how would you like to proceed?
I was just thinking that same thing. Uh, I think we should, this is, uh, as everyone knows, the mega accountability item, and so we will. Try to pause, um, by topic area. Are there any clarifying questions at this moment? All right, that was perfectly clear. Uh, continue on.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna shift over to Attachment Two, and as I mentioned, um, we have a whole team supporting, uh, this attachment. I'm going to provide you a bit of a, a brief background as to how we came to this topic, and then I will turn it over to my colleague Josh Strong. Uh, from the, uh, the local. Agency System of Support Office, LASSO. I know the acronym well, the, the words in between, I've, I've forgotten. Um, this morning. Thank you for the assist. All right, so just briefly to review your discussion from September, from just, just a little over, um, six, seven weeks ago. Uh, the department, in response to inquiries, um, from the State Board of Education, we provided a comprehensive. Review of first, um, State Board of Education prior action. On defining the English learner student group for the dashboard academic indicators. As allowed under the Every Student Succeeds Act. We also provided, uh, historical information on SBE prior action on the development of the English learner progress indicator. You heard a presentation from Hen- um, from Kenji Hakuta, who's a national expert on English learner students, and I heard his name this morning in, uh, Mao's presentation on assessments, so. Um, Kenji still seems to be working even though he's retired. And, um, specifically, um, Dr. Hakuta's work on the structure of the English learner student group. As it was intended ever, under the Every Student Succeeds Act, um, back from two thousand and fourteen, um, and two thousand and fifteen. So just as a reminder, the definition for California of English learners in the academic indicators. Are students who are reported as an English learner student any time during the academic year, including students who reclassified. Or as we like to use the acronym RFEP, within the past four years. Um, this is, this example, um, would specific. It would allow for students reclassified after June fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And as we shared with you in September, the purpose for including RFEPs. In the academic indicator, um, for our English learner student group is first that it removes disincentives. For reclassification that districts once experienced under that old accountability model. Uh, it allows us to see actual and ongoing progress of English learners. That the English learners are making within an LEA, and without them, the category of English learners would likely always show low performance. We also, um, cannot know whether recent RFEPs are continuing to progress if we don't show them for, um, you know, year, years out. It also allows us, uh, to understand the English learner development program, the success of that program from initial identification. Through initial years of reclassification. Two other points that we made back in September is number four, that, um, including RFEPs assists with the stability of the student group. And I just wanted to make a note that, um, since reclassification is locally determined by local educational agencies. English learner and RFEP student populations may have different characteristics because we don't have this unified. Um, standard, and they have a variety of criteria they can use to determine reclassified students. Finally, um, the, um, including RFEPs, uh, significantly increases number of schools. And LEAs with a valid N size to receive a color. So we actually see a presence of English learner student groups. For increased number of schools, I think you, if you may remember from September, um, it is in, um, over a thousand, if not in, in the. Uh, more than that, uh, that would drop out if we didn't include the RFEP student group in the academic indicator. So we, um, spent the last couple of weeks also thinking, uh, it would be helpful to provide an actual example, and so. The example I'm gonna show you, um, is, uh, is, is also in the context of when. The Every Student Succeeds Act first rolled out and states were considering, um, their definitions for their SSAT plans. The source of, um, this example is, um, from a blog or a, a post called. Ending the No Child Left Behind Catch Twenty-Two on Eng- English learner progress, and we do have the, um, link to that, uh, report here on this slide. So I'm going to, um, actually not spend time on this. I'm gonna show you a graphic, and I'm going to verbally walk through the points that I have on this slide. So just to acquaint you to this example, this is a list of eleven students. You can see their names on the left-hand side under the column Student Name. We have, um, two, um, two years of data. I have data from two thousand and fifteen for students and two thousand and sixteen. But I've actually disaggregated, or this example disaggregates this, um, by three columns for the second year of data. Specifically, this school, um, this hypothetical school is known as Middleville. Uh, it was a school that the instructional program for English learners was strong for all students. Um, as you can see from column, uh, the column labeled two thousand and fifteen to the column next to it, which is two thousand and sixteen with all scores. All students made gains on their English Language Arts Assessment. With an average score increase of eighteen points from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen. You can see that in the average change, which is the last row. Of, uh, that column three, that the column labeled as two thousand and sixteen with all scores. In two thousand and sixteen, two students met the reclassification criteria, Rafael and Urina, the first two students listed. You see that, um, in column, uh, which is, I should have labeled these as, with numbers. The third column over with data, which is called two thousand and sixteen without reclassified students. You can see that they are no longer applicable to be a part of the group. The students, um, reclassified because they reached the targeted score of three hundred and fifty. They were subsequently removed from the calculations of the English learner student group. You see if you scroll down to the bottom of that column, the average change has now dropped from eighteen to negative five. Again, keeping in mind that every student in this school with, that is an English learner had actually increased their scores. Moving over to the final column, there was, in two thousand, uh, late two thousand and fifteen, after the assessment. Um, was completed, a new student arrived, an immigrant newcomer student. Which is Jesse, and Jesse did not have a score in two thousand and fifteen, um, and we skip over to that final column. And he received a low score of ninety. The inclusion of the student's score impacted the total average score of the ELs. To the extent that it dropped from, again, starting at positive eighteen to negative twenty-three. So overall, we can see this, again, this catch twenty-two impact of removing our reclassified students. And only keeping current ELs in the definition. Another way of looking at this is from the overall, um, scores from year to year, in which we see this same, um, situation, the same school. Uh, in, in, it, just in a, in a graphic form. So the first two columns here says same students, the blue, which is the first column, excuse me. Their scores were two, two, two hundred and fifty-seven overall, uh, or rather on average. Um, the second column, which is two thousand and sixteen, overall, they had two hundred and seventy-five average scores. We shift over to the second, um, set of data, which is our reclassified students were removed from the EL group, and you see that shift. You see a shift from the overall scores for two thousand and fifteen being higher than the two thousand and sixteen scores. So that drop of the five points that we talked about. The final column, again, showing this graphically, the impact of the one newcomer student and only allowing current ELs in the definition. So again, this is just a hypothetical example that was, um, done in preparation for states considering. Um, English learners and whether or not to keep, um, RFEPs as part of the definition for the academic indicator. Um, based on previous experience from the No Child Left Behind days. So just wanted to make sure that we provided you yet another example of. Um, I think why the decision that the board made back in, uh, the beginning of, of, uh, the development of the SSAT plan is something that still resonates. So I know this is a little bit of a complicated conversation. I just, before we shift over to, um, to Josh and a couple of resources, I wanted to make sure. President Darling-Hammond, I paused in case there were any clarifying questions here.
I am on mute. Uh, are there any clarifying questions? Thanks for the, um, example, Cindy. It, um. It shows what different inferences we would draw about a school based on this. Um, member Escobedo?
Uh, I, I wanna share that I, I saw this when I first became superintendent and saw the transition. That I had schools that, on purpose. Um, halted reclassification because of this dip. Which could be very detrimental for students, especially if you're going into middle school. And you're tracked, and you should have been reclassified several years ago. So the repercussions of No Child Left Behind, or the consequences of this artificial dip. Was real, and the effects it had on student learning. Was devastating. So I just wanna share that, yes, there's a dip of scores, but how some schools. Delayed reclassification had a devastating effect on many of our English learners.
And of course, in that accountability system, um, this is supposed to, uh, let us know whether a school is doing a good job with its English learners. You have school that's doing a really good job with its English learners, looking as though it's declining. Um, because it is doing such a good job of reclassifying, so, um, that was the catch twenty-two. Um, any other clarifying questions or comments before Cindy proceeds? Take it away.
The other, um, piece that we, uh, did as a, as a takeaway from the September meeting was that there was a need for additional resources. To support English learners, um, on, uh, for, for the rollout of the dashboard in two thousand and twenty-two. And so since, um, your. And so since your, I feel like I have a little bit of a feedback here. So since your agenda was published, those resources have become live on our website. And so the first being how English learners are defined for each indicator. So you see on this screen, there's a flyer that's in purple. Purple is deliberate because that is the color we're using on the dashboard this year for status only. And then each of the indicators at the state level are listed that will be used, that are used on the dashboard. And so you see a definition for academic performance, college career readiness, English learner progress, chronic absenteeism, graduation rate, and suspension rate. This is, you know, one of the student groups that has, I think, one of the more complex definitions because of the allowances under, again, the Every Student Succeeds Act for this student group. You can find this resource on our Dashboard Toolkit. You can Google us at CDE Dashboard Toolkit, and we will be, we're going to be your top, top choice. The other resource that we added was how to look at English learners and disaggregated for the academic indicator. And so this is a new resource that we, again, developed in direct response to your discussion in September. And so you can see on this graphic that there is, first, there's a card that talks about English learners, and I'm actually showing off for the first time to you what our cards are going to look like for 2022. We are using a cell phone look. You can see the low, it has two bars. Of course, if you're at five bars, fully charged, you are doing great and you're serving your English learner students well on the academic indicator. So for this one, it gives you not only the overall perspective for that student group, for the academic indicator, but then, again, when we do view more information, we see that bottom graphic of the disaggregated data for current English learners, reclassified English learners, and English-only. And so this is one that I appreciate quite a bit because oftentimes, while the data on this particular graphic shows that reclassified English learners and English-only scored exactly the same amount, which is probably impossible, you would usually see our RFEPS doing actually much better than any of those student groups. So again, this is another way of slicing the information, which is something that you specifically asked for. So both of those flyers are available, again, at CDE Dashboard Toolkit, if you're Googling, or on our website under our toolkit. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Josh Strong to walk through the remainder of this attachment.
Thank you, Cindy. Good morning, President Darling Hammond, Vice President Glover Woods, Chief Deputy Nicely, and members of the board. I bring you greetings on behalf of the Director of the Student Achievement and Support Division, William McGee. He and a number of colleagues from the division are down at a conference in San Diego, and Cindy will catch up with him tomorrow. So my name is Joshua Strong. I'm the administrator in the Local Agency System Support Office here at the California Department of Education. And I'm bringing you an update today on the specific requirements related to English learners that exist within the Local Control and Accountability Plan template and instructions. As all of you are no doubt aware, in 2013, with the implementation of LCFF, there's been a requirement for all LEAs to develop and annually update the Local Control and Accountability Plan, or LCAP. This is something that's done in cooperation and in collaboration with local educational partners. Within this annual process, they're evaluating progress within the LCFF state priority areas, and they report out this progress utilizing the template and instructions adopted by the State Board of Education. The function of the LCAP, as stated within the LCAP template and instructions, is threefold. It serves as a comprehensive strategic planning document. It serves as to provide a record of the meaningful engagement of educational partners that influenced the development of the plan and the adjustments made to the plan. And it serves a role of accountability and compliance in including demonstrating how LEAs are meeting the requirement to increase or improve services for students that are foster youth, English learners, and low-income students. Within the Local Control Funding Formula, those three student groups are collectively referred to as the unduplicated student groups because an unduplicated count of those students generates additional funding. So going further into this requirement, the English learner student group is one of the three student groups that generate additional supplemental funding under the Local Control Funding Formula. And as a condition of receiving these funds, LEAs are required to include specific actions within the LCAP that focus on increasing or improving services for their English learner students, as well as for low-income and foster youth students. Now, these actions are required to address or seek to address the unique identified needs of the English learner students that have been identified through a review of available state and local data, as well as the input received from educational partners in the LEA's community. That available state data includes data from the dashboard, the Dashboard Additional Reports, Data Quest. Local data covers a wide range of information that's available from teachers, from report cards, from formative assessments, as well as a variety of other pieces of data. And the engagement from educational partners includes teachers, school staff, administrators, and most importantly, parents and students that are served by that LEA. The LCAP is required to include descriptions of how these contributing actions, these actions that are described as contributing towards meeting the requirement to increase or improve services, are in fact, an increase or improved service as compared to the services that are being provided to all students within the LEA during the school year. In addition, there are some other requirements specific to the English learner student group. All LEAs that serve a numerically significant number of English learner students, that is, 30 or more English learner students, are required to include additional specific actions within the LCAP. At a minimum, those actions have to address the language acquisition programs that are provided to students by the LEA and the professional development activities that are being provided for staff that are serving EL students. And again, that's required for any LEA that is serving 30 or more English learner students. In addition to some specific action requirements, within the LCAP, there is also a requirement related to measures of progress. And when measuring progress, LEAs are required to identify metrics that are going to be used to track progress. They're required to include specific metrics that are outlined within statute related to priority four, academic achievement, priority five, student engagement, and priority six, school climate. And in addition, the LCAP template instructions encourage LEAs to identify metrics for specific student groups as appropriate, which include expected outcomes that reflect narrowing any opportunity or performance gaps that have been identified within the plan. Now, it's also worth noting at this point in time that within the plan summary section of the LCAP at the beginning, under the identified need reflection, LEAs are required to identify any performance gaps or any student groups that are performing significantly lower than other student groups as identified on the dashboard. And so 2022, the dashboard for 2022, will be the first time in the last few years that we'll actually have that status data to inform the information that's going to show up within that particular prompt. So there are, within statute, some specific measures of progress related to English learners, to the English learner subgroup. First of all is the percentage of students that, who are English learners that make progress towards English proficiency as measured by the English Language Proficiency Assessment for California, or the LPAC. And secondly, the English learner reclassification rate. However, in addition to these specific required metrics, there's also a requirement in the LCAP template that the, for state priorities where there is not a specific required metric identified, the LEA needs to identify one or more specific metrics in order to measure progress relative to that state priority area. So for example, in state priority two, part of state priority two is the extent to which programs and services enable English learner students to access the Common Core state standards and the English Language Development standards for purposes of gaining academic content, knowledge, and English language proficiency. There is no statutory specified metric for that particular requirement within the state priorities. Therefore, LEAs are required to identify a specific metric of how they're tracking progress towards that within the LCAP. It's also something that needs to be measured and reported out as part of the Priority Two local indicator, which is reported to the public on the dashboard. In addition, as part of the template and as part of the instructions for the LCAP template, LEAs are encouraged to use metrics that are based on and reported through these self-reflection tools for local indicators that are reported on the dashboard. In each of the local indicators, LEAs are required to identify and measure progress towards implementing these various, what are referred to as local indicators within the dashboard. And that data should also be used to inform the development and the annual update of the LCAP. In addition, LEAs are encouraged to focus on a set of metrics and actions that the LEA believes, based on input that they've gathered from educational partners, based on educational research, based on experience, either of their LEA or other LEAs, of those things that will have the biggest impact on behalf of their TK through 12th grade students. So at this point in time, I'm going to pause, and I'm going to invite our colleagues from the Sacramento County Office of Education to speak with you on their role within, in supporting the districts within Sacramento County, as well as the specific training that they provide relative to English learners and the LCAP development.
Great. Thank you, Josh. I'm very honored to follow CDE's leaders, Cindy Kazanis, Josh Strong, and your presentation. Good morning, President Darling Hammond, Vice President Glover Woods, board members, CDE staff, board staff. It's with pleasure that I'm here today with my colleagues Kathy Morrison and Graciela Garcia Torres from Sacramento County Office of Education. We're excited to share with you today a look at how we support LEAs in our county in writing LCAP goals and actions that translate to effective and impactful decisions that benefit learners and their systems. We can go to the next slide. So this morning, in our department, actually at SCOE, we have the unique pleasure of providing technical assistance to LEAs through the development of their LCAPs and other state plans, as well as synthesizing the information provided by the department so that it can be applied thoughtfully and in such a way that the actions and services directly impact student outcomes. We are invited here today to provide a real-life example of the type of training that county offices provide that supports that LCAP development, highlighting the areas that data can be used as the plan is created, especially for English learners. So I'm going to start by sharing a bit of background on the Sacramento County Office of Ed and our theory of action for our work. And then Kathy Morrison will outline how we at SCOE develop and deliver LCAP professional learning. And then Graciela will wrap us up and share the way we approach supporting LEAs in understanding and using EL data and outcomes to drive improvement. So just here, just a little bit about Sacramento County, kind of by the numbers. We serve over 200, about 250,000 students that are enrolled in 13 districts and 51 charter schools in Sacramento County. There's a vast range of enrollment in those 13 districts that we serve, from the smallest, being about 246 students, to over 60,000 in the largest district. So the support that we provide to LEAs on their LCAP really varies based on their size and on each district's capacity. So for example, in some of our smallest districts that don't have the same number of dedicated employees that are working on pulling in information and writing that LCAP, we might provide a more customized support to them. And our support in general is varied. So we have monthly meetings. We provide one-on-one consultation and small group meetings with similarly sized or resourced districts. We also debrief state-level trainings, practice data protocols, and hold writing sessions. And, you know, districts can opt in and out of those as they need. Because our county is widely dispersed geographically, a bright spot of COVID has been that we've had greater attendance because we can use remote applications for our workshops and travel time is eliminated, which makes a big difference for really busy district leaders. And go to the next slide. So a little bit more about our students. Sacramento County is one of the most diverse counties in the state. As you can see, our racial and ethnic distribution has a nice spread, and students fall into a range of categories, those unduplicated categories that Josh was alluding to earlier, that indicate a greater need and more individualized supports. The English learner student population is around 42,000 students with almost 30,000 more students that are reclassified as fluent in our county. We have a wide diversity of languages represented. Spanish is the most frequent language, identified with 15% of EL speakers are speakers of Spanish. However, many more languages, almost 70, are spoken throughout the county. So, next slide. Several years ago, when the dashboard first came out, our internal SCOE team spent some time articulating a theory of action for how our support would look and feel for districts. And our theory of action is here on this slide. "We believe that if we assist our districts in building their capacity to improve and identify practices that ensure every child has access to a high-quality education and individualized social and emotional learning supports, then every child will achieve their greatest potential in life." We understand our role to be more than just LCAP technical support or providing DA, but really a coordinated and interconnected set of supports that work together to improve student experiences and achievement in schools. So keeping that ultimate goal in mind, we've landed on an approach that we believe works really well. At the heart of our work is a belief in continuous improvement where we spend intentional time reflecting on how impactful our support is. And to do that, we take feedback from our own colleagues within the county office. We calibrate with county offices across our region and the state. And most importantly, we take and use feedback from our LEAs that we serve to ensure that the support we're providing is really landing for them in a way that works well for their needs. Next slide. So, supporting LEAs and their LCAP development is a concrete way that districts and charter schools can communicate their strategic plans around improving outcomes for students. The LCAP, as you know, is a complex document, and each one, as the role, the role of the county office is really multifaceted. So we're the support provider, the reviewer, the approver of each LCAP. And as we read, we're looking really to see a through line that starts with the students. And as we read, we're looking really to see a through line that starts with the students, reflecting their successes and challenges that need to be addressed and really centers the feedback from a wide array of educational partners. And then we learn how the district plans to increase or improve services for their high need students, as well as all student groups that are demonstrating needs, even those that don't fall into the unduplicated category. So as we consult with districts and guide the development of the LCAP, we remind them to consider student needs first. We we prompt them by asking questions like whose needs is the LCAP designed to serve? What are those needs? What actions and services have been effective at addressing those needs? Which needs, what needs to be modified or expanded or reexamined? Ultimately, our goal is to adhere to what's written in statute and ed code and always seeking really to operationalize the spirit of those policies. That is, we're not the compliance police. Instead, we want to support our districts in leveraging documents like the LCAP to be the entry point for lasting structural, institutional and even mindset change within each system. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Kathy Morrison to share more about the process and the inputs that we use to help develop our LCAP workshops and technical assistance. So Kathy.
Good morning, President Darling Hammond, members of the State Board of Education. I'm Kathy Morrison, Coordinator of Local District Support Services and Accountability for the Sacramento County Office of Education. You can go on, please. In my role, I plan and coordinate our county's LCAP professional development and LCAP review process. There are a number of inputs used to develop LCAP technical assistance. The foundation is California Education Code. We follow relevant legislation and incorporate enacted policy changes into our technical assistance. Most recently, Assembly Bill 1868 established that reporting process for English learner achievement data that includes outcomes for long-term English learners, students at risk for becoming a long-term English learner and ELs who have been reclassified as fluent. This is our opportunity to highlight these new data and help our districts potentially identify areas of need that can be addressed through the LCAP. We emphasize a careful read of the LCAP instructions as they carry the full force of the law and attend workshops and office hours offered by CDE to understand the key points that we need to emphasize. SCOE is also an anchor county office of education for the EL Rise Institute. My colleague Graciela will describe in a moment how we embed elements of these materials into our trainings. And finally, with our county peers, we attend workshops offered by the California County Superintendent's Association, utilize the LCAP review manual and participate in those calibration calls where we share strategies and best practices. Next, please. Shauna mentioned how we focus on the needs of our users as we design our workshops. And that encompasses many things, district demographics, data, the resources they have in terms of staff and time. We also reflect on our prior year's LCAP process to see if we need to make any adaptations to scheduling. For workshops, whenever possible, we think it's important to invite participation from local districts so there can be some peer-to-peer learning. And we also study the adopted LCAPs. We note areas that could be strengthened and then double down on workshopping our materials to communicate in multiple ways the content areas that need to be reinforced. I want to make a note that our planning and improvement team is part of a multidisciplinary EL Rise initiative within our county office. And with this team, we studied the EL roadmap principles and we were challenged to identify an area of improvement that would be specific to our locus of control aligned to one of the principles. And so our team's aim is to support and encourage greater evidence of disaggregated data for English learners in LCAPs. And we are planning now what we might change in order to see greater evidence of that data. Next slide, please. So on this slide, we wanted to visualize examples of how we convey information in a workshop. We've been working in a virtual setting for two and a half years. And so we've had to use some techniques of learning design that strike a balance between creating warm and active engagement for attendees and also clearly conveying key pieces of information. Previously, we've mentioned responding to needs of our users. And the blue checkmarks that you see here were included to signify the most important information. This was our response to feedback received on a prior workshop. A participant suggested, and this is a quote, so it's a little awkward, that we add what's new, different that you need to watch out for so you don't trip up to address gaps and red flags that we may experience. There's a lot to putting together an LCAP. And it's our belief that if the basic elements of a presentation aren't clearly understood, we must take time to review and reinforce them. Next, please. We believe that our strongest lever for supporting an effective and impactful LCAP is working with the district staff during the development phase. That's the time of greatest influence. We encourage every district to share their LCAP in a pre-review. Some of them will chunk it out. We then use the California County Superintendent's Association LCAP Review Tool to indicate where the district has provided evidence of meeting requirements and where they need additional coaching. We provided a little example of this type of communication on this slide. Finally, we're open to support LCAP writers in any modality that works for them in that development process. We've had drop-in Zoom office hours, ad hoc meetings scheduled to fine tune specific LCAP content areas. With some districts, we just schedule a regular bi-weekly or monthly check-in on the LCAP and other accountability concerns. And we have found some success in grouping meetings by district size since the needs are so different based on student enrollment. Next, please. This suggested timeline helps our LEAs to visualize where they will need to be throughout the LCAP cycle. For county offices, the release of the 2022 dashboard and the data analysis that our county team will initiate will set our technical assistance in motion. While a mid-year report on the LCAP is not required, we continue to encourage it as a best practice for reflection and for transparency with educational partners. Our English learner curriculum specialist is a partner in this process from designing workshops to LCAP review. My colleague Graciela will now provide specific information about how county offices encourage and support the review of data that pertains to English learners.
Thank you, Kathy. Good morning. Linda Darling Hammond, President of the State Board of Education and members of the board. As Kathy said, my name is Graciela Garcia Torres. And I am a curriculum specialist for English learner programs and accountability for the Sacramento County. And I'm also a regional English learner specialist. In the next slide, I get to tell you about our process. So as our county office of education, English learner specialist and English learner lead for Region Three, these are inputs that inform my work. The collaboration among the regional English learner specialists alongside the California Department of Ed Multilingual Support Division to make meaning of the legislation is essential to this process. The bilingual coordinators network and the luncheon complement and complete the required information so that then we can go ahead and share the just-in-time of legislation and make meaning and make it relevant for our districts and in the LCAP process. As a regional lead, I have reached to 10 other counties to provide the same resources and information throughout the regional network, the multilingual education leadership network. And I am able to gather this information through the regional English learner specialist and the VC and the bilingual coordinators network and infuse it in the regional network. For the last two years, the Sacramento County Office of Education has been in collaboration with EL Rise, the English learner roadmap implementation for systemic excellence, serving as an anchor county, as Kathy said, to implement the English learner roadmap policy. And through this education workshop, workforce investment grant or the EWE, we have offered the English learner roadmap-aligned LCAP toolkit using the research-based tools to promote equity for English learners. Part of our internal process with EL Rise has been to convene an internal team. And we have 15 different cross collaborative departments making meaning of the services and programs for English learners based on their context. And as Kathy mentioned, each one of these departments is involved in a plan to study act cycle of improvement. They reflect upon the change ideas to better serve English learners and understand the principles of the English learner roadmap. And that is part of our process. In the next slide, you can see that being part of the Sacramento County Office of Education, LCAP, technical assistance and workshops, office hours and continued collaboration with our planning improvement team is an essential aspect to support the English learners in our county. Assisting our districts in building their capacity to improve and identify practices that ensure that every student that are English learners have access to a high quality education and do as best possible to individualize that social, emotional and learning supports is important. We use tools to offer the equitable opportunity to achieve our theory of action so that educators can also have these tools. We see the requirements of the LCAP for English learners, not as an isolated areas, but as interconnected concepts. The implementation of the ELD standards, the content standards, the English learner data, the professional development and the program descriptions are to build upon each other and connect. So what does that story say when we look at the data? What does it say in terms of what our students need? What does the English learner program progress indicator say in terms of the student achievement in language acquisition? And then what what do we know about our reclassified fluent English proficient existing data? And how successful are we providing access to the content and that continued monitoring? And that access to content for our English learners and achieving language acquisition? So these tools that we provide is a process of of understanding at a deeper level. In the next slide, you see one of these tools and resources. And so the Loyola Marymount University Center for Equity for English Learners and the Californians Together provide professional development. And this resources for educators, families and community members. Through the EL Rise, we have offered multiple sessions as an option for our districts to be part of and attend and engage. We feel that this ensures that the LCAP reflects how actions and services and programs and resources are made available for equitable opportunities and outcomes for our English learners. These resources have focused areas and rubrics that are research-based and can infuse practices for our that center on our English learners and achieve those intended gains. In the next slide, we see an example of what is found in this toolkit. You see the six focused areas are called out in this toolkit that provide the frame to dig deeper into how well we are focused in these actions, resources and that are requiring the LCAP. As you can tell, these areas reflect the requirements of the LCAP specifically calling out English learner student group. So one of those tools is in the next slide. And as you can see here, here's an example of the focus area of in the rubric to describe the professional development. These rubrics show are and serve as a guide and a reminder of what is effective. And what is that implementation level that we need to see and that aspect of language that we can use as we are making these plans? Districts are encouraged to use these rubrics and to use the language to support them in the process. We strongly agree with the concept that we rather have influence in the development of the LCAP rather than making corrections during the review. In the next slide, you're going to see this data. You might have seen this before. I was very pleased to hear about the new resource on disaggregated data for academic indicator. This is an example of what that means. This data came from the Loyola Marymount California Californians Together presentation. And it is a part of the Californians Together framework for an effective and coherent accountability system for English learners. As you can see, it shows the importance of pulling out the varied outcomes for reclassified English learners artif in comparison to the English learners. So in this is the 2019 dashboard data showing the results for the academic indicator for English language charts. And the subgroup is English learner for districts that have 30 or more students and that they had a performance in California, performance level in California. So the first pie, right, is this indicator. And we are looking for blue and green. And so we see some some blue, a little bit of blue and a little bit more of green. When you see the equation, the equate to the next two pies, you see the reclassified fluent English proficient students take the green and the blue. And you don't see that with the English learner. So this is an aspect of us encouraging our districts to disaggregate that data, especially locally having more opportunities to see that data more widely. And so we feel that a critical focus on English learners is not only about the performance level, but also that progress and that celebrating the success of the reclassified English proficient students is just as important as celebrating and adequately reflecting the needs of our English learner only student group. And finally, in this last slide that I have is just, you know, an example of what it looks like at a at a district level, this kind of data. As a county, we suggest to our districts the importance of disaggregating the academic indicator for ELA and mathematics. Again, this example is a district not in Sacramento, like I said. And it shows how the data, once disaggregated behaves with the purpose to have a better picture of the needs of the reclassified students as they are being monitored, as well as the English learners that they are in need of accessing content and acquiring the English language in the comparison of their English only peers. We feel that this practice is important for the continuous improvement and responsive needs plans to be implemented. It also provides a more accurate picture for their educational partners and opportunities to effect relevant increased or improved services. The California Schools Dashboard provides the mathematics and English language arts data comparisons for English learners. We encourage our districts to reflect this in their LCAPs. And in the recent years, we have seen more of our districts include the comparative data in their plans. And with that, I will now turn it over to Dr. Cook to share how we plan to move forward with the LCAP development.
Great. Thank you, Graciela. So, you know, kind of looking ahead, you know, given this moment in time as we look forward to a new dashboard and as we kind of emerge from these last two COVID years, so to speak. I don't know if we're emerging, I'm actually recovering from COVID right now. So it's still very much here. But we're really taking to heart, actually, dashboard principle 10 that was just discussed that really promotes coherence between data reporting and support and improvement programs. You know, the dashboard, the LCAP process, the system of support all work together to identify and address areas of performance that need to improve so that all interested parties can understand and work towards consensus 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 on the improvement priorities for a district and its schools. The review of these indicator data, data is embedded into the annual processes that drive goal-setting, outcome actions and expenditures in every district in California. And really what that looks like for us in our county is a continued collaboration with county office partners and advocacy groups to enhance our work. And within our own county office, a continued cross-departmental collaboration to deepen our implementation. And that really means looking at curriculum and instruction, LCAP data and assessment, expanded learning, early learning, social, emotional learning, the list goes on and on. And really kind of making sure that we stay And really kind of making sure that we stay organized and connected in such a way that our support to districts and uh charter schools in our county is coherent, cohesive and useful at helping um districts and systems really get at improving outcomes for students. So I guess with that, um, thank you for your time today. We hope that this presentation has provided um a little glimpse into how we provide guidance and support to LEAs in our county. And in particular, suppo- supporting and improving English learner outcomes. And that's it for us. Is there any questions?
I think we can proceed on, I think there's maybe still part of the item left to present. Thank you so much. Josh, are you there to present the next part of the item?
Good morning, we still have a couple of minutes left before morning, I'm gonna get you through this um so you can start your deliberations. Uh, just to close this out, um we have been busy this year. And I predict um very soon, by end of the month, we will hit ten thousand participants in our presentations for the year. Um, we spent uh really the spring and summer preparing for this fall. And so this gives you just a high level uh overview of how much outreach we've been doing. Um, but more importantly, on this next slide, uh we have a webinar series that we launched this, this Tuesday. We copied, uh really Josh does these Tuesdays at two, we're doing Tuesdays at two in November and December, he's gonna pick up the Tuesdays at two. We had over, uh close to a thousand people on that webinar, um which talked about just introduction to the dashboard. Uh Kimberly Munn Hank who's on um the Zoom today and is supporting us uh from Anaheim um at the Californian Education Research Conference. Uh, her team along with many others, not only in my division, but really um throughout the department who assist us have uh we've really benefited from this collaborative effort to make sure we are prepared as possible to continue to support the field once the dashboard is live um in December. And um one thing I wanted to mention is a, a presentation Kim did today with the Los Angeles County Office of Education around um looking at um how to support LEAs, look at their results in the dashboard. And I think one thing is that we need to keep in mind, LEAs are talking and serving students every single day. The state and this dashboard gets produced once a year. And so we're really looking in a rearview mirror and really the true work happens on a daily basis with a teacher um serving students and helping to um impact um their lives and in their future. And so we are so grateful for um this large system, not only of support, but around accountability, around data reporting. Uh, and we are prepared for a release, um like I mentioned in, in December. One thing I also wanted to just um say in passing is we have uh, uh because we are in our busy time, we've been delayed on some other reports. But one piece of data we got out this week was updating our college going rate reports. So for those of you that really um are paying attention to high schools, this is a report that we've only been able to do with some additional funding for National Student Clearinghouse um data. And so that is a match set that um we have not updated in two years. So I'm really excited that that data is out there. It does not contribute to accountability, it does not contribute to assessments, but it simply provides a perspective on students who are able to um enroll in our public um institutions and private institutions of higher education in California, including our community college system. So with that, um the recommendation is that the CDE recommends approval of the California School Dashboard Principles.
Terrific, thank you so much. Uh, at this point, we do want to put up the phone, the public comment line um slide. We'll open the phone line for public comment. Members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so by calling the telephone number and using the access code provided on the slide that is shown now. And while we're waiting, I want to ask our liaison Vice President Glover Woods if she has any initial comments before me. Then I'll ask board members if they have any clarifying questions on factual points before we go to public comment, which will be followed by board discussion. Uh, and so uh let's see if Vice President Glover Woods. You are, I'm not hearing you.
Yeah, but Vice President Glover Woods is not coming through on this end either.
Yeah, we're not able to hear you, there may be something wrong with your um audio. Okay. So we'll come back to you. Um, very good. Uh, are there any clarifying questions uh on matters of fact uh from the board before we go to public comment? And I am not seeing any at the moment. That's a good thing because we stand between ourselves and lunch. Uh, hopefully everything is crystal clear. Uh, we will now see if there is any public comment.
Uh, yes, we have thirteen callers in the queue, I will open up the phone line now. Good afternoon, please state your name and affiliation for the record, you have one minute, your time starts now. Caller ending in the last four digits, four, four, five, zero, you are now live, please start your public comment.
I'm Lori Johnson, Mount Diablo Unified School District. In Kern County with a population of thirty-six thousand five hundred and forty-four English learners. No districts are required to include a goal for ELs in their LCAP. Without including a goal with accompanying actions and services. The equitable allocation of funds for these students is not consistent with the dashboard. Principle ten calling for coherence between data reporting and support and improvement programs. The EL, the ELPI suggested English learning in only two districts out of forty-eight are not making adequate progress. For learning English in only two districts are eligible for support through differentiated assistance. We question whether only holding two districts accountable for progress and learning English and two for additional support. Through DA represents the true needs in a county with large numbers of English learners. Please review each component of the accountability system to better represent what should be the approach for uplifting the needs of ELs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record, you have one minute, your time starts now.
Uh, good afternoon, this is Jessica Sacco on behalf of Children Now calling in regards to the proposed dashboard principles. I'd like to thank the, the department staff for uh opening the doors of conversation with the LCFS Equity Coalition and for being so responsive to many of our suggestions and, and engaging in deep conversations. I'd like to focus specifically around encouraging uh around principle number one. We feel that this particular principle does not exemplify what we consider to be current practice. And therefore we uh are in full support of this uh principle as we believe uh and we'd encourage you to add well rounded to that principle. For principle number two, um our concern is that the LCFS, um excuse me, the equity report just uh simply reports a particular student group's place in relation to a standard, but not in relation to other student groups, therefore making a view, a view of the achievement gap a lot more challenging. For principles three and four, uh we've included in our letter an attachment for details about how the current rating system favors some indicators uh over others and identifying LEAs for district assistance. And we strongly support um and but uh want to state that we strongly support a multiple measures accountability system. Um, we do have continued concerns about the use of the term equalling.
Your caller, your time is up. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record, you have one minute, your time starts now.
Hi, Peter Ahern, President of the California Association of Science Educators speaking on behalf of a large coalition of science educators and organizations. We support the change to dashboard principle three to say reports each indicator separately since this helps resolve concerns about how indicators are weighted. We wonder if the language in the new dashboard indicator number four that says values each indicator equally could be amended to say values each indicator since the word equally could bring back the concern about rating unnecessarily. The point of the dashboard is that showing many indicators gives a fuller picture of a school's performance. It's really up to parents, the community and students to decide which are most important to them. The word equally doesn't add anything and implies rating. We hope these changes will resolve some technical issues around science being added to the dashboard. We look forward to science being on the dashboard next year, once we have two years of valid and reliable data. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record, you have one minute, your time starts now.
Hi, this is Manol Bongosta, Associate Director of Policy at Californians Together. And I am calling to raise our, our ongoing concern about our current accountability system hiding outcomes for English learners. And this is especially apparent when you look at our secondary students. This is of critical importance, given that nearly half of secondary English learners are long-term English learners. This means that half of our secondary EL are in a system that has failed to move them along with their journey towards English language proficiency. We are encouraged to fear that if the State Board of Education meeting, meeting and Dr. Hammond referenced a possible need to see how long-term English learners might be addressed with the state accountability system. And we fully support the State Board of Education looking for their exit bids. In particular, measuring and setting goals for districts to reduce the proportion of their secondary English learners who are long-term English learners might be a possible uh place to look at very similar to the goals that we set for, for um, for expulsion rates and, and other similar measures. Thank you again for looking into accountability for English learners and especially making sure that we're addressing the specific needs of the different uh types of English learners that are in our system, in particular our long-term English learners. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record, you have one minute, your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Martha Martinez and I am from SCIO, the broader early academic language. And I want to thank um the State Board of Education members for your attempts to create an accountability system that promotes a more equitable education system. Unfortunately, the current dashboard and accountability measures are not consistent with the principles we are adopting today, in particular principle two. The current system obscures the performance um and needs of English learners and sets performance standards for ELs that are too low. Over half of the state's current ELs are either long-term English learners or they are at risk of becoming an L-CAP. However, the state's current proposal would only require two districts to include a goal for English learners in their LCAP and would identify less than one percent of English learners as not making sufficient progress in learning English. I strongly encourage you to consider the unintended consequences from the current accountability approach and to develop an alternative approach, including convening a work group to help you identify accountability metrics that will promote equity for all students, including English learners. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record, you have one minute, your time starts now.
Greetings, Madam President and State Board Members. My name is Vanessa Calderon, Assistant Principal Chanoine High School in Oxnard, California. There are sixteen thousand and forty-three English learners enrolling in schools in Imperial Valley. They constitute forty-three of all students in this county. No school is identified for SEI or ATI. No district has to include a goal for their English learners in their LCAP. And only one district was identified for extra support to differentiated assistance. One would assume that the English learners are doing well, but the CAP data that was presented does not indicate that. So how do these decisions based upon the data from the dashboard align with principles two, five and six? The low expectation of the CAT scores for ELPI did not identify one district, the very low in performance level. We should reconsider looking at the alignment of the reform fee, fee, um feeling from the data on the dashboard and the needs of English learners. And what can the system um do to make the needs of English learners visible and actionable? We need your support and guidance to make this critical adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record, you have one minute, your time starts now.
My name is Jenny Snyder, calling on behalf of the California County Superintendent to support the CDE's proposed changes to the dashboard principles. We express our deep gratitude to Cindy Kazanas and her team for providing ample opportunities for all educational partners to weigh in and incorporating our input. We would also like to thank the local agency system support office and the Sacramento County Office of Education for such comprehensive presentations on the current requirements in place to support California's English learners through the LCAP process. The work of improving outcomes for our English learners is a shared responsibility. The California County Superintendents have found great value in the professional learning and technical assistance provided through the system of support educator workforce investment grant provided by our colleagues CalTog and CAVE. With their support, county offices support their local districts to utilize the LCAP process to operationalize equity and improve systems to better support our English learners. Finally, if the state were to consider making any changes to the LCAP, we respectfully request that no changes are implemented outside of the first year of the new three-year cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record, you have one minute, your time starts now.
Hello, Patty Chavez with SCIO enjoying CalTog Partners today. We appreciate the set of data dashboard principles and specifically the intention of creating gaps across the indicators. We believe it's appropriate to revisit the results and implications of the indicators and their alignment to the dashboard principles. Many lessons can be drawn from the data that today's speakers have and will share. We are glad to be learning from past initiatives where there has been unintended yet detrimental consequences for ELs. The current accountability system addresses many of the problems with the use of multiple measures. The move away from hitting targets to status and change however is overcorrected and now very few districts are identified to receive differentiated assistance. We urge the board to make this time to revisit how the academic indicator LP, DA, TSI and ASI are structured and how they can be revised to address the needs of EL. We welcome an opportunity for us to engage, to work together, to partner with you and staff. We thank you very much for your dedication.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record, you have one minute, your time starts now.
Good morning, board members. My name is Dr. Joselgo Moreno, Director of Parent Relations for CAPE California Association of Bilingual Education. School administrator and university professor, sharing with you that in Alameda County, only one school district out of eighteen has to include a goal for English learners in their LCAP. Keep in mind that the county enrolls forty-three thousand English learners in only one district, which is five percent of the districts needs to address the growth of English language proficiency for these students, our students. The accountability system only identifies two districts, or ten percent out of eighteen, that are eligible for additional support. They're differentiated systems. The issue transparency addressed in principle six speaks to the need to shine a light on language and academic needs of English learners. I think we all agree that with the numbers of English learners in Alameda County, we need to evaluate the transparency of the accountability system and the criteria for requiring goals, actions and services for English learners. With only one district required to include a goal, a goal for English learners, the visibility of thousands of English learners is met. These are our students, our future citizenry of the state and the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record, you have one minute, your time starts now.
Hello, I'm Sally Fox representing the California Association for Bilingual Education. I'm also a retiree from the San Diego County Office of Education where an EL data dashboard is developed to support leaders of our forty-two county school districts to make better decisions. The FDCOE dashboard makes more specified or specific data visible for districts thereby providing more meaningful information to truly reveal EL needs. The latest iteration of FDCOE's tool reveals student learning trajectories related to English language acquisition and allows educators to drill through reporting to individual student level profiles. This humanizes the data so educators may better understand the strengths and needs of their students. Our current state dashboard indicators are not complete enough to require any districts in San Diego County, and only two statewide, to include a goal for ELs in the LCAP, which questions its alignment to dashboard principle six. When considering the process of continuous improvement for the state's dashboard, FDCOE's dashboard may be a good model to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record, you have one minute, your time starts now.
Yes, President Darling Hammond and members Shelley Spiegel Coleman from Californians Together. For the twenty twenty-one twenty-four LCAP, only two districts are required to include a goal for English learners. Dr. Hakuta explained that the EL aggregate score gives the best representation of a district's EL program. From initial From initial English learners to reclassification, we disagree. For example, one large urban school district with a large EL population, not a port-of-entry district, has an ELA/EL performance level of yellow, suggesting they're doing okay. But their current ELs are red. Sixty percent of other districts across the state are orange and yellow, indicating room for improvement. Their RFSs are yellow. Fifty-eight percent of other districts are green or blue, again, room for improvement. The dashboard suggests there's no need to address either of these groups in their LCAP. With Principle Eleven calling out dashboard continuous revision and improvement, we are eager to collaborate with you on this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon, board members. John F. Elt from Public Advocates. Along with the Equity Coalition, we urge the board to better identify, for support and assistance, all the LEAs that are not making adequate progress with their ELs in at least two ways. First, refine the trigger for determining which LEAs should be in differentiated assistance based on their EL performance. Ideas worth studying include building in individual student growth data when those scores become available, reducing the number of years of RFSs in the measure, separating the LP out as its own state indicator, and/or adding an LTAL component to the model. This work should be part of the dashboard work plan for 2023. Second, modify the LCAP so that more LEAs are required to establish separate goals, actions, and metrics for low-performance student subgroups, and not just those in differentiated assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, this is Linda Kyninsky. I'm the Director of Resistance Policy at the Center for Equity for English Learners at Loyola Marymount University. To achieve equity, we must focus on closing opportunity and achievement gaps. Yet our most recent LCAP report by the Center for Equity for English Learners looked at twenty-six districts serving a thousand or more English learners, which was fifty percent or more, and found that out of all those twenty-six, only five had metrics or desired outcomes for English learners. Yet these outcomes were not differentiated for ELs. For example, one area that is concerned is high school dropout rates, with a goal of decreasing that by three percent. But three percent for both all students and for ELs, but essentially that doesn't close the gap because the ELs had doubled the rate of the dropouts. Equity requires closing gaps. Closing gaps requires an accountability system that is based on differentiated targets as well as the action, services, and support needed to achieve these differentiated targets. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon, President Darling-Hammon and members. Liz Guillen, Public Advocates, also for the Equity Coalition. We appreciate the revisions to the guiding principles, but don't agree that the current practice in the dashboard actually reflects the new language. We recommend that aligning this refinement be added to the department's work plan for 23. The EL and LCAP presentations today were really strong, the ones that Josh and the Scully team gave. We recommend that these presentations be a separate webinar to the benefit of LEAs, including other county offices of ed. This was a much deeper dive that LEAs obviously need. Gap closing goals and metrics should be required for student groups that are performing substantially below white, non-low-income, English-only student groups. The board and administration should consider strengthening this demonstration in the LCAP in the January budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon, this is Sarah Dolus with Peach Plus. I also want to share my appreciation for the board and staff and hearing and being so responsive to our feedback on the dashboard principles. We're really thrilled with the changes that were made, particularly as it relates to Principle Two. And we look forward to the evolution of the dashboard to better reflect the focus on gaps and gap closure, as discussed by my colleagues from Children Now and the focus on gaps on the Equity Report. We also want to reiterate, as of the new Principle Four, we appreciate that the need to articulate valuing all of the indicators. We would also recommend removing the word equally because of the potential unintended consequences in terms of weighting as we think about equal value. Thank you again for all your work.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon, my name is Zedro Chavez, Director of Policy and Partnership with BEGA, the Parent Institute for Quality Education. Today, we urge you to take a closer look at how the data dashboard principles are translated when addressing the needs of English learners. We're grateful for the data dashboard principles for upholding high performance standards and accuracy in reporting. However, districts aren't required to include the goal for EL students in the LCAP or missing out on important data that could inform much-needed interventions for students, especially after the learning loss occurred during the pandemic. Parents, including BEGA parents of English learners, are eager to engage with their schools to support their students' academic achievement. The families need data on their students' growth and clear ambitious goals that our English learners can work towards. Thank you, and we look forward to working together for the success of ELs and local California families.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Yes, Sandy Mendoza, families and schools. Well, San Jose County enrolls two hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine English learners. Narrative from the data chart, that's what that shows. How is it possible that there are no districts that are required to have a goal in their LCAP for English learners and that every EL student in the eighty districts in the county are making adequate progress in learning English? Differentiated assistance should be supporting the closing of gaps for student subgroups as stated in Principle Two. But our current system of support only identifies three out of eighty districts needing support for their English learners. This is not an accurate picture of what is needed across districts in this vibrant and diverse county. Please review each component of the accountability system to better represent what should be the approach for updating the needs of ELs, which is aligned to Principle Eleven. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon, my name is Dr. Alma Gasto from California Association for Bilingual Education, CAVE Multilingual California Project. I'm also a school board member for Linnwood Unified School District and university professor in Cal State Long Beach. As a professor involved in teacher preparation, we look at the dashboard for data to look at their individual districts and classes. Here, our students find it critical to grow of their English learners. The data provided is not transparent and misinforming our candidates of the actual needs of the students, minimizing the actual growth that should occur. When looking at the LCAP, students are often dismayed at the lack of goals and metrics for growth for English learners. We teach our candidates to have high expectations, as described in Principle Five, and also to create an active program in the classroom. However, the low expectations promoted for growth on the LP, our mass needs of our current English learners in the academic indicators are confusing and leave our students with many questions. Today, I encourage you to consider adjusting indicators on the dashboard for and enhancing LCAP measures. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon, my name is Eduardo Munoz, and I'm a professor at San Jose State University, where I am also coordinator of our bilingual program, and I am supporting the point being made by Californians Together. Santa Clara County enrolls over fifty-four thousand ELs, making up nearly one in four students. However, none of the districts in the country were required to write goals for ELs in the LCAP, and none would be then identified based on the low expectations that are set by the LP. Moreover, only two of the thirty-one districts were identified for differentiated assistance based on EL performance, and just six schools were identified for additional targeted support and improvement for EL performance. This information should cause us to want to take a look at the alignment of the results stemming from the data on the dashboard to the needs of English learners and what can the system do to make the needs of English learners visible and actionable? How is it possible that these students are not getting support? That these organizations, these LEAs, are not being identified for support in the light of these results? We need your help and guidance to make these critical adjustments. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Dr. Chris Pukabon, and I'm an educator at Glendale High School, teaching one hundred and seventy-five ninth and tenth grade ELB students. Half of my students are considered long-term English learners or at risk of becoming one. This is a significant number of students to reflect members across the state of California. It has led to a widening achievement gap between this group of students and their peers. The current system hides outcomes for ELs, especially our secondary students. Through my doctoral and fieldwork, long-term English learners have also mentioned not understanding the pathway towards reclassification and felt a stigma attached to labels. We need an accountability system that will no longer make these students invisible. Now that the governor has signed AB eighteen sixty-eight, we hope that as the accountability system is reviewed, we might find a way to ensure that meeting the needs of LTALs is incorporated. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Robert Manwaring from Children Now. We'd like to associate ourselves with the comments of CalTog, the Equity Coalition, and public advocates around the EL issues raised today. Wanted to add one more issue to the plate. Specifically, we'd like to see a twelfth principle added that would state something to the effect of additional state and local indicators may be added to the dashboard that support LTFF state priorities. The reason we think this additional principle is needed is when you look at the interaction of the valuing indicators equally principle, which is number four, and the requirements of ESSA around weighting of indicators, it seems like it might create a barrier to adding additional indicators like science or a growth model or currently high school chronic absence rates, which has already been banned from the dashboard because of this interaction or teacher assessment. So we'd like you to take a deeper look at the weighting of indicators and how additional indicators could be added in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for item number thirteen.
Thank you so much, and I want to give Vice President Glover Woods an opportunity to frame some comments before we get started on our discussion.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me? No? Yay, all right. Thank you, thank you very much, President Darling-Hammon, and thank you to all those who called in. Just a couple of framing comments before we continue into our discussion. Along the line of, again, giving thanks, much thanks to all of the educational partners and the CPAG members for giving feedback on the dashboard principles and for CDE for taking all of that feedback along with the feedback from this board to revamp and revise the principles. I think one of the key pieces is understanding that these principles, as was suggested in the presentation, will continue to come back for review, continue to come back for revisions that may be needed as time evolves. So quite excited about that. There is something in our current draft of principles that I would like to point out and ask that we make an adjustment to, and that is the use of the word accountability system or system in the areas where it should really refer to dashboard, because these principles that are before us for approval are in relation to the dashboard. The accountability system, of course, is a much larger entity, of which the dashboard is one component. So I will bring it forward in a motion, but I just want to bring this forward for consideration of the board, which is that in Principles One, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, and Eleven, it would be appropriate to replace the words accountability system and system with the word dashboard so that, again, the principles align and the language in each of the principles aligns to the dashboard itself. So again, just wanted to point that out. Just another comment or two before we continue with our discussion, which is in relation to the LCAP requirements for English learners and how it is to be reflected in the LCAP. As Josh Strong went through, and I can say also as a former county office administrator, I know that the requirements for the needs of English learners to be addressed in the LCAP are quite extensive, and these are not may-do's, if you will, but must-do's, because our English learners are part of the unduplicated people group that generates supplemental dollars. So actions and services for increased supports and services, I should say, are to be reflected in the LCAP. So I'm concerned with many of the communications that we've received in our box, as well as what we've heard in public comment. I'm going to need a little bit of clarification as to how these requirements are in place, but yet it's it's being said that there are no LCAP goals for LEAs in such an extensive manner across the state. One other aspect that I just want to point out for conversation is that the majority of county offices do go through a quite extensive process, providing professional support to LEAs on the development of their LCAP, as well as the review of the LCAP itself. And there's a lot of work done through the California County Superintendent's Association, particularly the Curriculum Instruction Steering Committee, to ensure calibration across the state. So as was stated in one of the comments we heard during our public comment period, we had a wonderful example from the Sacramento County Office of Education. We know there are county offices of education that are really going through quite an extensive way and providing a lot of important information to LEAs on how to look at the needs of English learners and how to reflect that and also look at disaggregating that data. I also would suggest that we look at those models and continue to share those models across the state for those that might still be wondering how to best make sure that English learners and the needs of our English learners at all different levels are actually being addressed. I believe at this point, that concludes any framing comments that I might have, and I'll save anything else I have for our ongoing discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And I am the other liaison for accountability, so I have a few framing comments, and then I see we have discussion pending with some board members ready to dive in. I also want to just thank the department for providing all of the many slices of English learner data. And I think the issue that we're surfacing and that we want to come back and deal with is the fact that what is not a trigger right now for LCAP attention is the progress of English learners as it is reflected in the LP data and in the at-risk and long-term English learner data. Those are available to people, but we do not currently have a requirement that they be a basis for planning and investing. And so I'd love for our department staff to come back to us in the next meeting. And as we're thinking about how to start a new three-year LCAP cycle in 2024, we need to plan for any changes in the LCAP now. I'd like us to take the opportunity to take a look at the LCAP instructions, provide recommendations to the board on where they could be strengthened, to ensure that a deep data analysis around LCAP planning for English learners includes LTALs and at-risk of long-term English learner status and a look at the progress that is shown in the LP indicator. We got started on this, and we started the conversation today about how the Department of Education in Washington had created a category and then used that category for accountability in ways that were problematic because districts making very strong gains using the definitions that were required could be put into sanctions, could have schools closed, could have teachers, staff reconstituted, even as they were making good progress because the indicator itself was badly constructed for the purpose of seeing whether a district was helping its learners progress. But we have another need, we've redefined that category, but we have another need, which is to have an indicator really looked at for the LCAP that shows progression directly for LPs and for for LPs and for students who may be at risk of long-term English learners. So I'd also like to ask the two thousand and twenty-three Dashboard Work Plan to include work that will strengthen our reporting on the English learner student group, uh, specifically those categories that I've just identified, and I hope we'll come back and, and be able to take a look at that. Um, on the, uh, principles, we've heard a lot of good ideas for wordsmithing the principles. Uh, we just heard from Vice President Glover Woods, uh, the proposal to be clear about the fact that they pertain to the dashboard and not the entire accountability system. Uh, we heard from public comment and from some of the letters, uh, the, uh, I think valuable idea to delete the term equally from Principle Four because it still can be misread and perhaps to introduce the term well-rounded into Principle One, uh, which I think reflects our goals. So I would like to just, uh, pre-offer those, um, uh, ideas as well as we take up the principles. Uh, we do have a commitment from the department to bring those back every year. So, uh, if we can enact something, uh, today with some of the wordsmithing, we can continue to work with the department on those in the future. Um, and so now I know that, um, Member Escobedo and Member Roscoe Gonzalez are ready to dive in. Uh, Member Escobedo, do you want to start? Your hand went up first.
Uh, yes, I just pretty much, um, wanted to emphasize the importance of following long-term ELs as, as well as at-risk, which you beautifully stated. And also ensure, even though I, I heard from Dr. Glover Woods that counties do calibrate themselves, I, I just want to make sure that, um, you know, they're, they're also utilizing similar resources such as EL Rise that I think is a great, uh, roadmap to follow. And I know Sacramento uses it as an anchor. So I, I just hope also the assistance um, is, comes from a, a similar source as well. So just, just wanted to share those two points.
Thank you. Member Roscoe Gonzalez?
Thank you. Um, I want to thank, um, Vice President Glover Woods for saying that the principles are malleable and could be revisited. Um, I think that I heard quite a bit of the callers, including, uh, the California Association of Science, asking about the language of Principle Four that states the values of each indicator equally. So, and I know you mentioned also, uh, Vice President Darling-Hammond about looking into the words of that indicator, since the word equally brings back concerns about weight unnecessarily. So I think the equal weighting approach could result in unintended consequences, so maybe revisiting the language on that principle. And also I want to mention about how we are a highly multilingual state and we need to make sure that the support is available, in particular for English learners. With the revision of the principles, I see an opportunity for us to review the consequences of the indicators and the alignment to the principles. I would suggest the CDE include in their accountability work plan a review of the impact of the current academic indicator, the cut scores of the LPI, and the criteria requiring districts to include a goal for student subgroups in their LCAP. And now is the time to look for two thousand and twenty-three dashboard, and it would be good to see the options for next year.
Terrific. So I think we're going to have a meaty conversation, uh, next meeting about how we can address the uh, English learner, um, indicators. Um, knowing that we, um, yes, would you like to, um?
Just to clarify, um, your next meeting that we will be presenting at is March. Uh, we will not be able to come in January because we're going to be putting out a dashboard in December. So I just want to make sure as far as timing goes that we're on the same page for, uh, when you will see an accountability item, uh, around the dashboard.
Okay. Uh, as soon as we can, you know, we, we want with all deliberate speed to, you know, begin considering these, uh, alternatives so that we can learn what's possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, so I would like to, because we know that that's an important issue and we've heard from board members and the public that we need to address it, um, put that to our next, uh, opportunity to have that conversation and focus in on the item that we need to consider for approval, which is the dashboard principles. And, um, what I've heard thus far is, um, several potential small amendments to the principles, um, which maybe Vice President Glover Woods is about to summarize for us, uh, so that we can, um, move them forward in a way that we understand will be able to be a living, breathing document that can be further revised. Vice President Glover Woods?
Thank you, President Darling-Hammond. Uh, before I move forward with the, um, the motion, which will be somewhat amended, um, I want to be sure that I've captured the suggested amendments to the motion, if you will. So in addition to the, um, word changing, again, of accountability system and system to dashboard, I have noted to remove the word equally from Principle Number Four. I want to confirm that I got that note correctly.
Right, we don't signal waiting, yes.
Okay, and to, for Dashboard Principle One, it was to look at, was it removing the word well-rounded or adding?
Incorporate incorporating the word well-rounded.
Incorporating the word well-rounded in, in Principle One, because I'm noting that it is, uh, well-rounded is in the principle currently.
Okay.
So I just would like to clarify what adjustment we want.
There was a public comment to that effect, and maybe it got added, um, right before we got here to look at it. So that's great. So just really the Principle Four, which we heard several comments on.
Okay. And, and again, I, I second that, the emotion of having our additional conversation. We have, still have a lot of things to talk about as it relates to making sure our English learner data is accurately reflecting the needs of our English learners. Uh, so President Darling-Hammond, if, uh, it's okay, I can move forward with the motion.
All right.
Okay. Um, I, I'd like to move that we, um, adopt the revised dashboard principles with the following amendments to those principles. Um, we would to replace the words accountability system and system with the word dashboard in any of the principles where those, that language still exists. We would also like to remove the word equally from Dashboard Principle Number Four so that it reads values each indicator.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I will note that there was a, a caller who asked about adding a principle that would allow for us to evolve the dashboard. Uh, I think we assume that, so, um, we can, uh, accept that, uh, idea in, in principle, but not in the principles. So with that, uh, I guess we need a roll call vote.
President Darling-Hammond.
Aye.
Member Escobedo.
Aye.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Aye.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Patillo Bronson.
Yes.
Member Porter.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Yoshimoto Towari.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you so much. And thank you, uh, Cindy, Josh, and our friends from the Sacramento County Office of Education for that presentation. Um, we are now going to reopen Item One to take action on the Preliminary Report of Actions Draft September two thousand and twenty-two Meeting Minutes, the State Board of Education Screening Committee Recommendations for Appointments to the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools, California Practitioners Advisory Group, and the Instructional Quality Commission, and report on our liaison assignments. Uh, we want to do that expeditiously so that, uh, those who need to get to lunch can do so. Uh, while we're waiting for any members of the public to call in, we've posted the public comment slide. Um, do I have a motion from a board member to approve the September two thousand and twenty-two State Board of Education Draft Preliminary Report of Action Meeting Minutes?
Don't move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much. Um, and is there any public comment?
Uh, no, we currently do not have anyone for public comment.
Okay, well now hold a roll call vote. Brooks, please call the.
President Darling-Hammond.
Aye.
Member Escobedo.
Aye.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Patillo Bronson.
Yes.
Member Porter.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Yoshimoto Towari.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we're now going to take up the State Board Screening Committee's Recommendations for Appointments to several commissions. We need the public comment slide back up because we're reopening the phone line for public comment. Thank you very much. Uh, members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so by calling the telephone number and using the access code provided on this slide that is shown now. And while we're waiting for any members of the public to call in, I'll ask Vice President Glover Woods, who chaired this year's process with our great thanks, to share the recommendations from the State Board Screening Committee regarding appointments to the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools, California Practitioners Advisory Group, and the Instructional Quality Commission.
Thank you, President Darling-Hammond, and I would like to extend my thanks to Members Lewis and Escobedo for their time and commitment to this process as well as to the CDE and State Board of Education staff. Uh, we had quite an opportunity to meet and interview quite a number of candidates for the various commissions. Our request for the applications for new members to the Instructional Quality Commission, also known as the IQC, the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools, and the California Practitioners Advisory Group began in August. The Screening Committee, I'm, so I'm going to start first with the IQC or Instructional Quality Commission, um, recommendations from the Screening Committee. The Screening Committee selected the following candidates for the IQC for a three-year term beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-three, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. And the candidates are as follows. Jennifer Hicks, Assistant Superintendent Educational Services from Placer County Office of Education, Janet Lanning, Teacher, Fillmore Unified School District, Alicia Regoza, Teacher on Special Assignment from Mountain View School District, and Erica Sapeda, Teacher on Special Assignment from San Bernardino City Unified School District. The Screening Committee also recruited for the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four IQC student member, and we recommend Ethan Chen for appointment to a one-year term that will start September first, two thousand and twenty-three, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Ethan is currently a junior at Montevista High School in the San Ramon School District. The next group we will look at is the California Practitioners Advisory Group, also known as CPAG. The committee met for the members of, oh, I'm sorry, the committee recommends the following CPAG members for reappointment for a two-year term starting January first, two thousand and twenty-three, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Melanie Green, Director of Continuous Improvement and Support from San Joaquin County Office of Education. Ms. Green will represent the authorized public chartering agencies. And Ronald Anaya, Assistant Principal from Rockland Unified School District. Mr. Anaya will represent principals and other school leaders. The Screening Committee recommends the, uh, the following individuals for appointment to a three-year term for the CPAG starting January first, two thousand and twenty-three, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Judy Flores, Superintendent of the Shasta County Office of Education. She was selected to represent the category of superintendents and other administrators. And Kelsey Crossen, Senior Management with West Ed, and she was selected to represent the category of education researchers. The Screening Committee will continue recruitment for candidates to the CPAG to fill the private school representative category, and we will bring our recommendations for the Chair and Vice Chair to the full board for a vote at our January two thousand and twenty-three State Board Meeting. The last commission that I'd like to share with you is the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools. We recommend the following members be reappointed for a two-year term starting January first, two thousand and twenty-three, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Erica Jones, Teacher with the Los Angeles Unified School District, and she will represent the teacher category. And Matt Taylor, Superintendent for River Charter Schools, and he will represent the charter schools category. We also recommend individuals to be appointed to the ACCS for a two-year term, which will start January first, two thousand and twenty-three, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And we recommend Todd Fennell, County Superintendent of Schools for Imperial County Office of Education. He was selected to represent the county superintendent category. And Steve Almost, Superintendent of Visions and Education Charter School, who was selected to represent the parent or guardian of charter school student category. The committee will continue recruitment for candidates to fill the ACCS District Superintendent and Teacher Categories. Their recommendations will be brought to this board for a vote at the January two thousand and twenty-three State Board of Education Meeting. So congratulations to all of the candidates. We look forward to working with you on your respective commissions and committees. And I just need a point of clarification. Do we need to bring a motion forward for these, or are they just accepted as read?
We do need a motion.
Have a motion.
Okay.
Have a motion. All of them at once, is the way that it goes. Not one of them.
You don't want it individually, honey.
One motion.
One motion, one motion. So I move that we approve and accept all of those.
We have to have, we have to have public comment first, and then we.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, that's all right. Um, and so I don't know if a member Lewis or a member Escobedo wants to add anything, then we appreciate their participation on the committee.
All, all I would like to add is just to commend Dr. Cynthia Glover Woods for her amazing grace and, and organization in, in performing these interviews. It was a Herculean effort reviewing their extensive background and interviewing. We had so many great candidates throughout California, but I just wanted to commend our, our Vice President, uh, for such an amazing job. Thank you.
And I would just like to echo those comments. It, first time participating and, uh, as Dr. Cynthia Glover Woods made the process very smoothly, uh, a smooth process, an enjoyable process. We did have a lot of great candidates, and it was just a pleasure to meet all of the candidates and, uh, just congratulate them on moving forward.
Thank you so much. Are there any public comments?
Uh, we do not have on any callers on the queue for public comment.
All right, great. Um, so now can I have a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the appointments, um, as read and shared, um, to the various commissions, IQC, ACCS, and the CPAG.
Terrific, and is there a second?
A second.
Thank you very much. Uh, Brooks, can you call the roll call vote?
President Darling-Hammond.
Aye.
Member Escobedo.
Aye.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Patillo Bronson.
Yes.
Member Porter.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Yoshimoto Towari.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Terrific, thank you. I do want to invite our board members to report on, on their liaison activities that were not related to items on our September agenda. Um, I also know that there's some people who have had luncheon obligations that they are looking to fulfill. Um, and so I will urge us to get to the high points, uh, maybe in about a minute each, uh, of our, uh, liaison reports, uh, so that, uh, folks can be only a little bit late for their, um, appointments. Uh, so I'm going to start. So I'm going to start with Member Escobedo.
Yes, very quick. Last week, I went to the NASB conference and presented on behalf of San Diego State, but also obviously was there presenting, you know, the state of California on partnerships with universities and districts. And I just want to let you know, talking about accountability, how many state representatives came up to me and asked me questions about the dashboard? Most of the states use a single indicator, and they are fascinated with what we in California have constructed. So that was great. I also attended a school with Superintendent Thurman this month, a community school who won the, earned the Implementation Grant at Vista District. And it was just great to see the beginnings, well, and further improvements on their community schools focus. So that was, that was great to see it in action. Thank you.
Terrific, and excellent modeling. Vice President Glover Woods.
I have nothing more to add, President Darling Hammond.
All right, Member Lewis.
No committee liaison report since last month, but I will say that I was able to attend the Second Annual Kern County Superintendent of Schools Equity Summit and participate on a panel discussion about putting equitable practices in action, and it was all about students choosing to see and the power of equity in education, so it was very enjoyable.
Member McQuillan.
Yes, lunch is calling, so I'll be brief. We're waiting for a new date on the Joint Pathways on Career Technical Education. We had to postpone our date this month due to trouble finding a date that works for everyone, but looking forward to that meeting. I want to tell everybody, this is American Indian Heritage Month that starts here in November, just keeping that in mind. There are some wonderful model lessons in the ethnic studies curriculum that we passed way back in March 2021, but reminding people there are three really good lessons in there that could be tried out, so hoping to see that. So thank you.
Terrific, thank you for that very timely reminder. Member Orozco Gonzalez. Oh, I'm sorry, Member Olken. I'm going to be completely alphabetical here.
Hello, I am the liaison to two different commissions. The Advisory Commission on Charter Schools didn't meet this in October, so no need to report on that. And then also I'm the liaison for the Advisory Commission on Special Education. And just to be super brief, I think the most exciting thing that happened at the Advisory Commission on Special Education is Senate Bill 291 passed, which increases the size of the commission by two, by adding two student members to the commission. And so we spent a bit of time thinking about how the commission would rethink its work to ensure that we can get the most input and leverage from having some students on the commission. And I think everyone's really excited about that. And those two students will be students, the requirement is between 16 and 22 years of age with exceptional needs. So I think that's a really great advancement for that commission. And that's the end of my report.
Terrific, what a good announcement. Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Well, I had the assessment mega items, so I think we've covered those extensively. I just want to remind all the educators and community members that collaboration is the key for student success and to continue that spirit of collaboration, because when we work together, we create a better learning experience for our students. So I just want to repeat that, because I think that that will be the key going forward and into embarking next year as we create student goals.
Terrific, thank you. Member Patillo Bronson.
Good afternoon, and there's a couple of updates I'll share. One is that the Department of Education has launched its UPK Communications Materials Tranche, which is really focused on making sure that school districts and community partners are aware of some of the new state-funded services, funding streams, and also that there's outreach to families so that they can avail themselves of both the expansion of universal pre-K for threes, as well as universal TK, Transitional Kindergarten, for fours. I was also delighted to be able to share some of these more recent developments with the NASB Early Learning Group online. And it is, it is exciting to actually see that some of our work is certainly, I think, attracting the attention of some of our state peers and other geographies, and that there's also parallel shifts, I think, happening in other states around the P to three continuum. Lastly, I'll just flag that the Department of Social Services, which is sometimes a sort of corresponding agency that certainly works with many of the same folks who we are focusing on in terms of children and families, put forward its rate reform recommendations to the early childhood workforce, particularly looking at zero to three, but also aftercare for children zero to 12. And so we are, I think, eagerly awaiting sort of to see where that moves. And actually, the last thing I'll flag is a PPIC study that just came out, which I think really connects to our conversation about community schools and the environments in which children live, really celebrating what California has done and really prevented in terms of child poverty. Looking at the child poverty rates, which dramatically fell from about 18% in 2019 to 9% in 2021. And all of those children being both in the zero to five space, the feeder pattern into the K to 12 system, and many of those children being the five to 17 range, being able to have the wraparound supports that enable them to show up into schools and be ready to learn. So those wins, I think, largely were attributed to CalFresh and the EITC and Young Child Tax Credit, and just acknowledging the connection between all of our systems as we continue to build out the whole child system of support.
Yeah, and that shift in poverty was both California-funded and federal ARPA funds, the SRF funds accounted for some of that.
You're much more generous to acknowledge the feds.
Well, and when that ended, because Build Back Better was not enacted, you know, the poverty rates nationally have gone back up a bit, so we've got more work to do, but we should celebrate our successes. Student Member Porter, your report.
Absolutely. I'll keep it brief. So in addition to being at the state conference, I also attended two other student advocacy conferences. The first was in-person at Portola High School, where we give feedback along with Dr. Woods. We actually got to be in-person, which was very fun. We gave feedback on six student proposals on financial literacy, socioeconomic inequalities, and sustainability in schools. And I also gave a presentation to about 50 San Benito district students about student voice on the local and statewide level, encouraging students to get involved, giving public comment at local board meetings, creating clubs on civic advocacy, and talking to district staffs, because they are the contextualized local agents. And so that is what I've enough to, and I look forward to continuing to hear student voice these next few months.
It's great, and it's expanding. I love it. Member Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members and members of the public, including educators, students, and families. Since we last met, the Commission on Teacher Credentialing has moved important work in the areas of literacy, early childhood credentialing, and teacher data. In literacy, the Commission adopted Standards and Teaching Performing Expectations, TPEs, to ensure teachers, including early childhood educators, are prepared to teach foundational literacy. I can hear you smiling through the Zoom. It approved a mandate that all multiple-subject, single-subject, and education specialist credentials must transition to the new standards by July 2024. And all new PK, PK3, EC credentials must demonstrate alignment to the newly adopted literacy standards and performance expectations in 2023. As we all know, the way we prepare teachers is a critical step to ensure all students learn to read and love to read. In early childhood, the Commission also adopted Program Pre-conditions, Program Standards, and Teaching Performance Expectations for the PK through three Early Childhood Education Specialist Instruction credential. This work is responsive to the state's master plan for early learning and care, and will be critical to staffing the state's commitment to universal transitional kindergarten. In the area of teacher data, the Commission approved a report to the legislature on the early implementation of the California statewide assignment Accountability System with the CDE, which the CDE leveraged to publish the first-ever school-side-level assignment monitoring outcome data on Data Quest earlier this year. Finally, the Commission also approved a passing standard for the California Education Specialist, NTPA, Performance Assessment. Taken together, these reflect the Commission's critical work to ensure that California teacher candidates have the highest level of education, preparation, and training to meet the ever-changing needs of all students. So that was finally on the Commission, but that is a great segue to talk a little bit about the Yidan Prize, which supports changemakers in education to unlock a better future for all learners. And it is the most prestigious prize in education, and we happen to have Yidan Laureate, recipient of the prize this year, among us, and I'd like to congratulate President Linda Darling Hammond. So well deserved.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Member Rodriguez. Member Yoshimoto Towery.
Thank you. So while I'm, this is my second meeting, and we're finalizing my official liaison assignments. I just wanted to say I'm looking forward to joining our colleagues at the Sacramento County and Los Angeles County Offices of Education at the California Civic Learning Summit on November 15th, hosted by the Californians for Civic Learning. And this is in collaboration with the Power for Democracy Steering Committee. And then in December, I look forward to being with, attending our California School Boards Association annual conference in San Diego. So thank you.
Terrific, and I will just add, in relation to our linkage to the California Commission Excellence in Education, the CCEE, that they have launched the Learning Acceleration System Grant, which allows for state funding to be used for statewide professional learning infrastructure to support professional development in math, ELA, and English language development for learning acceleration. This is being led by Santa Clara County Office of Education, San Diego County Office of Education, and Lake County County Office of Education for English Language Arts, and there's also a Rural Math Collaborative. They're developing professional learning modules covering evidence-based strategies and math literacy and language development that will be free and accessible to educators across the state. Once they're finalized in early 2023, and they held orientation meetings for their online course writers, every module will include guidance on integrating universal design for learning, social-emotional learning, and culturally sustaining pedagogy with classroom instruction for acceleration. So that's an exciting process that's underway. They're also hosting, they did host a Learning Acceleration System Grant Professional Learning Network meeting, and that will be continuing quarterly to help coordinate the efforts that county offices and districts are undertaking. And the Rural Math Collaborative launched as well with its inaugural professional learning series with the California Math Project. So there's a lot going on in the state to pick up on the themes that we talked about during this meeting for really wrapping around our students academically and in every other way to promote accelerated learning. And with that, I think we are at a point where we can adjourn the November 2022 meeting of the State Board of Education at 1:10 p.m. I wish everyone a good weekend, and those who are rushing off to lunch, a very good lunch. Take care.
Thank you all.